We are live.
We're just waiting for Spanish translator. It'll be just a moment. Chair Cloud, we'll go ahead and proceed with the presentations while we wait for the interpreter. We'll go ahead and proceed with the presentations while we wait for the interpreter so we may begin.
So we'll call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of January 16th, 2025 into session. The first matter is the roll call. I guess the first matter is the Pledge of Allegiance, then roll call. So roll call, please.
All right. Chair Cloud.
Present.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner McGee.
Present.
Commissioner Morando.
Present.
Commissioner Ryland.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner Capen.
Here.
Give me if I butchered.
So we should move to the approval of the agenda before the presentation.
Yes, Chair Cloud, if we don't have what we need for the item where we need interpreters, then we'll postpone at that time. So we'll go ahead and proceed.
So are there any changes to the agenda by staff or commissioners? Not will proceed your motion.
I should do a proof.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Cloud.
I don't vote.
Okay. Lawrence.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
Morando.
Yes.
Ryland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Capen.
Yes.
You're doing fine. Should we move to the presentation now or do the approval of the minutes?
Chair Cloud, we can go ahead and proceed as usual.
Okay.
With approval of the minutes and please note that you have received updated packets.
I have.
With some corrections.
Yes, and I. Oh, and the approval of the consent agenda.
Yes. Please feel free to proceed on that, too.
So. Do we have any comments on the approval of the consent agenda or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morando.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryland. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. The first one is October 21, 2024. And on those minutes, I still have a correction, two corrections. Under the approval of the October 3rd, 2024 minutes, it has a not present member Sasha McGee. I don't think it's a problem that it's there, but the problem is it isn't anywhere else except on the approval of the October 17th, 2024 minutes, it says not. And then says member Sasha McGee. It doesn't say, it doesn't have the word present, but I'd take both of those out. So it's consistent with the rest of the minutes. Any other corrections or comments on the minutes? If not.
They have a motion to approve with the chair's corrections.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Capen.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
Morando.
Yes.
Ryland.
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Sorry, Smith.
Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of findings and conclusions. The first one is case number 2023. Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, now we'll move to the December 5th, 2024 minutes. Any changes to those by staff or commissioners? If not, we'll move to a motion.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Lawrence, Commissioner Lawrence.
Staying as I was not present.
Thank you. Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
All right, you're good. Commissioner McGee. Commissioner Morando.
Yes.
Commissioner Reeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Then we'll move to the approval of findings and conclusions.
And sorry, Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Okay.
There's only one set of minutes that showed up. Is that correct in the packet? There were two of them. The findings and conclusions, I'm sorry. There's only one?
Yes, Chair, that is correct.
Okay, and that's the Hart Road Development Plan.
Yes, Chair Cloud.
Okay, so and the other ones are postponed to another?
Yes, that is correct. We're still adapting to our new system. Our apologies.
Okay, so we should note that case number 2023-7752, 4,4200 Beckner Road Preliminary Serial Subdivision Platte will be postponed until February?
Yes, Chair Cloud, that's correct.
Okay, and along with case number 2024-8898, 214 Camino de los Marcos rezoning, that will be postponed also.
Yes, Chair Cloud.
So we'll move on now to the approval of the findings and conclusions in case number 2024-89318, 4,400 Hart Road Development Plan. Any changes to those findings and conclusions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lawrence.
Staying as I was not there.
Commissioner McGee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morando.
Yes.
Commissioner Reeland.
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Now we'll move to staff communications. Heather, you want to introduce?
Chair Cloud, thank you. So we have a lot of things going on in planning and land use. And the first one is related more to our building division's efforts with reference to the Green Building Code. And we felt it's important that the Planning Commission know about this sustainability efforts that we have been making and advancing in all aspects of our planning. So that was the first one, correct? Tom Graham is the Assistant Director who manages the Building Division as well as the Inspections and Enforcement Group and Engineering Technical Review will be presenting. As well as on Zoom. Is that Steve, Tom?
Sorry about that. Yeah, Heather said who I was, Tom Graham. And Steve Onstat will be doing the presentation remotely. He's with Evergreen Building Solutions. Him and Doug Pouchard have worked tirelessly with us in the Building Division. And we're trying to move this forward. Some great solutions in doing so. And I'm going to turn it over to Steve for his presentation to you. And I just want to say that we were very fortunate to have the subject matter experts that we do have working with us on this project.
Steve, you may unmute. And I believe you can share as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so I need to share my screen. I don't see that on my.
It's on the lower middle?
Yep.
IT, can you please promote Evergreen Building to panelists? Right, we see your presentation.
Okay, can you hear me fine?
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you. We were fortunate to be given the new format we're supposed to use for presentations from the city. So this is the new look. I'll start out by just acknowledging who the team was. Basically, the Deputy Land Use Director, Tom Graham, who we just talked with. Richard Trillo, who's the Building Division Manager, Ravi Padia, Inspections Division. Robert Ortiz, he's the Green Building Code Specialist. Doug Pouchard with Harvest H2O and myself. This was sponsored by Counselor Carol Merrill Worth. Doug and I were asked to assist the city in developing an update to the Green Building Code because of our background in energy and water. I've actually been working with the City of Santa Fe on green codes since 2009. I am a HERS WERS Lead Energy Star Water Sense and a Passive House Certified Verifier. And I'm also certified by the International Code Council as an IECC Certified Residential Energy Inspector and Plant Examiner, which gives me a lot of understanding of the green codes in the code side. I was on the committee that developed the original Santa Fe Residential Green Building Code based on the National Green Building Standard. Doug is known for his expertise in water conservation in Santa Fe and nationally. He helped develop the WERS program that we use in the city of Santa Fe. He also leads the Next Generation Water Summit that's held in Santa Fe, Chile, and I think the city is a big participant in that. I wanted to give just everything in the context, a little short overview. Some of you probably know all of it, but I wanted to go through this. The city passed, Santa Fe passed a resolution in 2006 to reduce Santa Fe's carbon footprint. Following up on that in '09, the city developed by ordinance the Santa Fe Residential Green Building Code. This is Chapter 7, Section 741 and Section 742. This is separate from the Land Use Code, which is Chapter 14. The code was then based on the National Green Building Standard, which is now an ANSI standard. That code was similar in many ways to LEED for homes and Build Green New Mexico, both of which are used by Energy and Minerals for the New Mexico Sustainable Building Tax Credit. The National Green Building Standard lists categories, as you can see here. It was based on a point system for compliance. You don't see Chapter 1 and 4 because, 1 through 4, because they were part of the National Green Building Standards Administrative Procedures and therefore were not adopted or incorporated into the ordinance. This program introduced the HERS concept of energy efficiency compliance. The HERS is an index for those that are not familiar with it that compares the design of the home to be built, including everything from the boiler to the wall to a home that was built just to the 2006 IECC, which has a HERS index of 100. The 2009 ordinance required a home to have a score of 70. So by definition, it's 30% better than the reference home. In 2014. Oops, I'll get my. In advance, probably. 2014, the city adopted a new section to the Green Building Code. That was a section that followed the other two. It's Section 7-4.3, and that was the Residential Addition and Remodeling Green Code. It, too, is based on the National Green Building Standard. In 2021, the Residential Green Building Code is amended. The National Green Building Standard was dropped from the code and streamlined to focus just on the areas of energy, water, and the environment. This dropping of the National Green Building Stone was just for the Residential Green Building Code, and it didn't impact the use of the standard for remodels and additions. This process streamlined the compliance with the Green Code and provided for third-party verification for most of the code requirements. The third-party process eliminated the problem the city had of maintaining a QA and a QC process and for staffing code to do that compliance. For the energy compliance part of the code, that was the HERS rating, or called the Home Energy Rating System. It is overseen by RESNET. RESNET stands for Residential Energy Services Network. RESNET has evolved as an important participant in all code development. They developed the standard for the code on how we do a blorador test and how we do a duct leakage test. And they also developed the path in the code for what's called the ERI path. All of these are ANSI standards. For water compliance, this was the WERS, or the Water Efficiency Rating Score. It is overseen by the Green Builder Coalition. The WERS itself was actually developed by Santa Fe and is now recognized by the EPA as a home-certifying organization for water sense certified homes. For the environmental part of the code, the HERS does provide some of the oversight for that in the testing, but the balance is done by the Santa Fe code officials. For instance, radon mitigation is done by the code officials. This streamlined compliance with the Green Building Code and providing third-party verification for most of the code. Oops, did again the wrong slide. In January 24, the state adopted the 2021 IECC Code with amendments, and they became required in July of this year. Santa Fe follows all of these code as required. Even though we haven't passed an official ordinance, it becomes effective when the state makes it effective. The state also adopted the building, the mechanical, and the electrical codes and other codes in 2023. Our directive was to meet the requirements of the current building code, update the Santa Fe Green Building Code with increased energy efficiency and water efficiency, incorporate multifamily buildings into the Green Code, which was not there before, and update the addition and remodel code. We had our own goals as a committee. We wanted to, of course, first meet the directive, but try to simplify the code structure and eliminate redundancy and also streamline the permit and the CO documents required by people that are permitted. This eliminate, eliminating the redundancy meant not to restate what was already in other codes like the IEC New Mexico or other Santa Fe codes. So the first directive was to meet the New Mexico codes. Sections 1, 711, adoption of a codes is in the ordinance. And what that is, it's just stating officially the adoption of the codes that New Mexico has adopted. The sections below that, 712 through 734, are not addressed in this ordinance. So we jumped down and so the balance of the ordinance will just specifically deal with Section 74, which is the Santa Fe Green Building Code. So let's look at first what the committee did. We wanted to simplify the code structure. So we first looked at the overall structure. The current code structure is shown on the left and the proposed structure is shown on the right. So basically, what was in the code is a lot of repetitive language. For instance, the the part where it says relationship to other codes, administration, et cetera, was restated every time there was a new code like residential versus additions and remodels. So those were all moved and we recategorized that first section of the code, which used to be called authority, is now called general provisions. And then everything just followed in order after that. So when we look at the simplified structure of the actual Residential Green Building Code, you can see that on the left, everything was just listed in kind of a hodgepodge area. I mean, water would take place and then ventilation and radon would happen at the end. And all those needed to be in categories. So on the right, you can see that we moved everything into categories. So now there's a specific section for energy in the requirements, water and environmental. And we're hoping that that will help people to lead, to understand the code better. Just a second here. We also added a section called Code Compliance Documents. And this is a sample of what that is. It's a table so that the permittee can see quickly exactly what documents we want from them. We went through every single document that we are currently getting to give a permit to somebody or a CO, and we eliminated a lot of them where some of these documents had duplicated information. So the first step was to incorporate multifamily. Instead of having a specific multifamily division, we actually were able to just put a statement in the code that says that that we comply with the definition of a dwelling or a townhouse as defined in the Energy Conservation Code. However, we modified that code in Santa Fe and added this language at the bottom to say that this code except this code shall apply to buildings of any height. The prior, the actual IECC says that it stops at three stories. And for us, it's a second. So our position is that the energy with the HERS and the water of WERS does not change just because of the building altitude. It doesn't affect the construction process, which follows a separate code. And this definition now will apply throughout the codes. So that means it'll apply to new construction and additions and remodel codes. So we start with the first item that we're supposed to meet, and that's energy efficiency. We made a new requirement. It's requiring everybody to comply with what's called the prescriptive path of the code. That's new. We've been sort of following that guideline, but it's actually officially in the code now. And then we are changing the HERS rating from 60 to 55. This is about an 8% improvement over the current code. And it's important to know that the HERS ratings are not linear, so an 8% is a significant, especially when it's coupled with the first item that we did here, which was to meet the prescriptive path. Water efficiency is also changing. After a lot of deliberation, we went from 60 to, or 70 to 65, which is about a 7% improvement over the current code. There are new water requirements for multifamily, however, besides just a WERS rating. So all multifamily. So all multifamily buildings that require professional engineering stamp, which is, is defined by the New Mexico codes, will be required to use what's called a peak water demand calculator. What this does is it helps to size the pipes properly, and it really has a huge impact on water savings. The original way that this was done was called the Hunter curve, which was developed in the 1940s, and is just completely obsolete with today's technology. Multifamily buildings will also be required to have a dedicated landscape water meter for projects with more than 10 dwelling units. The environmental efficiency part. Whole house ventilation is required by the I E C C for its efficacy, and the flow for that is defined in the New Mexico Mechanical Codes. So that, that's, that's taken care of by the codes themselves. So we didn't have to really restate the language in our code on how this is done. We just refer to the codes that have it already written. This eliminates confusion. We also added the requirement for exhaust systems, usually in a kitchen exhaust, to have makeup air if it's over 400 CFM. This is a common requirement in programs like the National Green Building Standard Lead, Build Green New Mexico, and, and others. The reason for that, if, if you're interested, is because it creates too much negative pressure on the house. And if you have combustion appliances in the house, it can cause a carbon monoxide issue. Environmental efficiency, we all, we had a program in the code before for duct protection, and that's a holdover when we kept that in the code. We added a new thing called garage ventilation. This is required when a garage is attached to a dwelling unit that uses exhaust only to comply with whole house ventilation. The point here is that the exhaust system creates a negative pressure in the house, which draws the contaminated garage air whenever the door is open to the dwelling. This negative pressure is created in the garage to help mitigate that impact. Radon has been in the code for a long time. We did not change that requirement. We also added a new item in energy efficiency, which is sound transmission. It's already dealt with in the codes. In the IRC and the I B C, we adopted the language from those and said that, by reference, that said that if you have a building that shares a wall with another dwelling unit, you have to meet the sound transmission requirements. We also added a new document. This document sort of comes from third-party verifiers who found locating the disconnect valves or switches or whatever for utilities very difficult sometimes. So now in, as part of the code, you're required to have an as-built plan. That's a plan sheet that just shows the schematic of the building, or the, the plan itself, and show where you turn off the electricity, where do you turn off the water, where do you turn off whatever utility it is. This code also requires that where that utility disconnect is, it's labeled properly. And it also requires that we have to ensure that the disconnect is accessible. We've often had a hard time finding the water valve, and when we did find the water valve, we couldn't reach it because it was behind a boiler. The next section is that we are required to do is to update the residential addition remodel building code. So we'll move into that section now. The first step into that particular process is to repeal Exhibit A, Chapter 7. That's the remaining part of the National Green Building Standard. And it had two chapters in it, the chapters 11 and 12. Those two chapters no longer even exist in the National Green Building Standard, so we really don't have any reference to back, back it up with. And it, what it was, was a very extensive 34-page spreadsheet that a builder had to go through in order to get a permit for a remodel or addition. So this eliminates that entire document. It's gone. Under this new program, it's, under the old program, was, it was possible to meet the required points in the spreadsheet without any real impact on the building itself. So, and it was also very difficult to verify because the number of options in the spreadsheet were pretty random and, and would have been impossible for the building code official to know which one they really needed to verify. So when we get, so as we started to do the development of that, we followed the same format. We have a section in the code that starts out with applicability, and then we go into the requirements, and we break it down the same way with energy, water, and environment. And, and at the very end, we have the code compliance document, which is again, is going to be a table that demonstrates to the permittee exactly what documents they have to provide. First, it's important to know that because of the language you put in the top part, multifamily is included in, in this particular program. Additions and remodels are actually covered in the I E C C in Chapter 5, and it basically just says that you'll follow the code. Now that you don't have to do the blorador test, because obviously it might be just a little addition on a very large house. But there is also another I E C C code, which is adopted by New Mexico, and that code is called the 2021 International Residential Existing Building Codes. What that code does is it establishes when a remodel or an addition is going to be required to follow the new construction code. Also, the Santa Fe residential additions remodel code is, is in it. This is all in addition to the two codes I just mentioned above. So the applicability has been expanded a little bit because we're, the code officials are saying they're getting all kinds of different requests for different types of structures. Some of them are actually dwelling units. Some of them are actually just attachments like a bedroom. Some of them are just garages, or sometimes it's a building that is going to be an office and not a dwelling. So we defined all those spaces so that the permittee will have direction on, as to what they need to do for compliance. This provision also has flexibility by the land use director so that whenever there's issues that just cannot be met by a remodel, they have some flexibility to deal with that. And it does provide for some exceptions, like a building 300 square foot remodel or addition really does not have to follow the code, and we have some other rules in there about that. For energy efficiency, then we're, we're specifically reinforcing compliance with the I E C C. For energy, we're requiring them to demonstrate code compliance of the building shell. Now, they don't have to do that for the building entirely. They only have to do that for the part of the building that's impacted by the additional remodel. There's another part of the code that's called functional areas. And for functional areas, that, that's more aggressive because if you're just remodeling the bathroom or a kitchen or a mechanical room, that's called a functional area, and it requires that the appliances, the furnace, or the boiler, the hot water system be Energy Star certified. This allows us to rely on another outside entity for compliance. Certificate process is going to be easy for the code official to verify because most of the equipment, as I said, that is Energy Star, has a certificate on it or a stamp, or it could be easily verified through Energy Star. The, the new energy remodel code is pretty aggressive on water. I think we all agree water is one of the things we have to be most concerned about. There was never any conditions in the remodel code or addition code about water. So in this case, all, all the appliances and fixtures must meet these requirements. The code will require all appliances and fixtures to be Energy Star or Water Sense certified. There's a specific requirement that shower compartments are restricted to 2.5 gallons per minute because that could be a big use of water if they're allowed to have four or five showerheads in one stall. And the water component, and the water component in the additional model is required to be verified by a third party now. That way, we know that that water is in compliance with the code. Now, there is an option to this because if, if you really want a shower that has more than 2.5 gallons, and we're providing that you can go through the WERS process, and that basically means you're, you're getting your whole building reviewed for compliance. That means you might have to change toilets in your house. It may mean that you have to change your irrigation system, but it gives you the ability to do whatever you want with the water if you can comply with the, the whole, the whole building water requirement. And we require that to meet the same standard as in the new construction code. For the environmental compliance part, this is a kind of a new thing that we're pushing is that they have to comply with this particular section of the I E C C. What it's intended is to eliminate carbon monoxide condit, conditions. And so what it really says in the code is they want you to isolate fuel combustion appliances and mechanic equipment from the thermal envelope. So if, in some of these older homes that had a furnace sitting in the middle of the hallway with a door around it and a couple walls, they just have to figure out a way to show that they're going to isolate that. They can do it by sealing it, putting gaskets on the door, getting better combustion air into that compartment. But it also exempts, you know, direct vent appliances, like mini splits and things like that, or stoves or fireplaces. And then the last one is, we, we're going to enforce the same exhaust requirement on kitchens that are over 400 CFM. Radon mitigation is not required in remodels or additions, but testing is required. And the intent there is only so that the parties are aware of the radon level, and they can make a decision for themselves on how they want to mitigate radon. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Just to let you know, this is intended to be a high-level overview of work, the work that's been done. We've been meeting with home builders and architects, and we've had more in-depth discussions with them. And we've almost gotten to the, the point that we're ready to submit to the legal department our changes for the, the ordinance. So it's, it's intended to provide better organization and eliminate redundancy and conflicts. And then Steve is also, he mentioned he's been tasked with producing those better checklists to improve the process for the builders as well. So with that, we stand for any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Is there any attention, this is a question that, be obvious how it was fueled recently, but about fire mitigation with new construction, especially to protect residences, multifamily residents from?
Steve, I don't believe there's anything in the green building code on that. That would be more in the fire code. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the way that the, the I E C C deals with that, or the I, I E C C deals with that is it's a separate code. And we can, the city can easily adopt that code. The state may adopt that code in the future. I think the thing that's going to drive that more than anything is the cost of insurance. But we, we could, we could as a city adopt the, it's called the Urban Interface Building Code, I believe. And we have builders that are actually doing those kind of things already in some of their houses. One of them is called unvented attic assemblies, which is dealt with in the, in the IRC, or the residential building code. And what that does is, what we find in some of those fires, it's the vents on the seat, in the roof, that let the embers in, and when you have an unvented attic assembly, you get rid of that. Some of our roofers are also using a membrane that goes down before the flat roof is put down that retards the fire from getting to the OSB. So it's already being done in part, but it probably is something that should be discussed. But I don't think it's a green building code issue.
And, now, Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith, right. We're also, part of this, part of this whole ordinance change is the code updates that we're doing to keep in line with the, with the state.
Any other questions? Mr. Whelan?
So in your last slide there, did it say that you guys were doing away with radon mitigation? Did I see that correctly, or did I just, my eyes deceived me?
I think your eyes are deceiving me.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No.
Steve, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, we, we've never required radon mitigation in, in an addition or remodel. I mean, it would be difficult to add radon mitigation to a 300 square foot addition to a 5,000 square foot house. So what we've always done in the prior code is we've required them to test for radon so that if that turns out to be more than three prequel curries or whatever number they decide they want to work with, they can make a decision to mitigate. Obviously, when you open up things, you have a chance of mitigating, and so we leave it up to the, the owner builder to make that decision. But we're requiring them to, to find out if they have a radon problem.
It was my understanding that new construction require mitigation at, underneath the slab foundation.
That's new, that's new construction. New construction is still required by code.
Correct. He, he was talking about the additions and remodel.
As far as remodels, I mean, I run into it with my work all the time where we're constantly dealing with Radon Pro and various other vendors that are doing mitigation. Like I said, I just thought my eyes were deceiving me, so thank you.
Any other questions? Not, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom and Steve. With reference to the next item under staff communications, there's quite a bit. I'm really excited to have a presentation on the general plan kickoff. Our consultants include Majid Renew, who is the Senior Vice President and National Planning Lead. He's online for W S P. In addition, we have Nick Fazio, who is a local Albuquerque liaison with W S P and is from New Mexico and has a lot of local know-how as well. And then Janice Belitnikov is our strategic planner and is collaborating and coordinating with those two, in addition to other members of our team. So in your packets, you will also, also see as part of that, the community engagement plan. And that is something that we've been working on and trying to be very mindful in terms of getting input from the community. So I'll turn it over to Nick. And just a side note, Majid, if you choose to speak, you can just unmute.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening, commissioners. Janice Belitnikov with the Land Use Department. So glad to be here again with you, to update you again on the general plan update. As you can tell by the frequency that, that which you're seeing me, we are actually making progress very quickly. So today, we would like to present to you the public engagement, public launch of the general plan update. Our, our title for this planning process is Santa Fe Forward. And I'll allow Heather to pronounce it in Spanish because your accent is better than mine. Santa Fe ha pasado. So this is the overview and initiation to the packets that you have received and the plans with which we will be involving the public. First, I'd like to start by introducing the project team. You heard just recently over the Zoom, Manjit Ranu, and we have Nick Fazio here in the audience with us. He will be co-presenting with me today, jumping in as needed. They are both from W S P U S A. That's our prime consultant for this planning process. And they have partnered with Leland Consulting Group for economic study and design workshops for our environmental and design elements. I'll start with an overview today for is part of the planning process. And the elements that we'll cover this evening are the purpose, need and benefits, the work plan and project team, the assessment report outline, public engagement and communications plan, and then cover some next steps. I T, can you please promote Majid Renew to allow screen sharing?
All right, would it help? If I shared from my computer, will people see it advanced that way?
Yes, that's what we're hoping.
Okay.
Thanks, Manjit.
Kind of queued up here.
Slide?
All right, folks see that okay?
Yes, we can see it. But you have a side banner there. I don't know if that is something we can remove or not.
How's that? Better?
And click on the, the X on the side banner.
Let's see. All right, one moment, please.
It's a Zoom banner.
The Zoom banner on it? Are you seeing the screen view?
Yes. Can we advance to the next slide?
Yeah, just one moment. I'll have to. It's this here. You still seeing the banner?
Yes, but I think it's a Zoom banner, so I think it has to stay.
All right.
We'll just.
Is that better?
Thank you. Thank you, Manjit. So back to Santa Fe Forward. Thank you so much for your patience and we apologize for the technology issues. So let's see what advance. One more slide forward, please.
Okay.
So back to why we are updating general plan. We answer this question with three responses, the purpose, need and benefits for this process. The purpose, of course, is to have a long-term policy roadmap that will define a shared vision for our community, set the long-term goals as it pertains to housing, transportation, economic development, and much more to align all of our policy priorities. The last general plan, as you are aware, took place over twenty-five years ago. And many shared values are still relevant today in our community. However, we're also adapting to modern priorities and, and, and evolving to modern circumstances. These include being in a coast, a post-COVID era, having digital nomads moving to our community, dealing with housing affordability that our country has never seen before. And technology and A I as it affects our community in myriad ways. The benefits for meeting this need include streamlining our decision-making and guiding future investments. Those are both public and private investments and ensuring equitable opportunities for all Santa fans. Next slide, please. So not everybody who's tuned in to the meeting may know the main components of the existing general plan, which will always also be carried forward into the general plan update. And the primary components are the vision, goals and policies, the physical form and function, economic, social and environmental topics, and services, facilities and culture. I'll go through each of these just briefly so that you'll understand what all we will be updating in this process. The vision, goals and policies is a guiding statement, statement reflecting the city's long-term aspirations and values. Specific measurable goals and objectives that align with the vision and address priorities such as land use, housing, transportation and community wellbeing. The physical form and function section addresses housing, neighborhood characteristics, transportation and how the pieces all fit together. Economic, social and environment speaks for itself. And services, facilities and culture speak to educational resources, fire, police, libraries, parks, et cetera. Next slide, please. The update of these components will take place over a three-year work plan and it's a seven-step plan. You can see on the right side, we have the portions of each of these steps with the time budget allotted. So you can see what are the larger steps that will take quite a bit longer period and those that are much quicker. We're currently in step one, which is mobilization and understanding. In this step, we'll launch the digital user platform as a central public resource and also launch our community partner program, which Nick will speak more about soon. We'll also host our first open house and collaborate with the new community partners who prioritize equity and accessibility. Step two will come next. In this step, we'll shape the vision and the goals through surveys, public events and branding efforts. And we will constantly be endeavoring throughout to ensure inclusive input and to integrate feedback on a consistent loop back into the planning process. Step three is our scenario planning. This is kind of where the rubber hits the road. And this is where we'll engage with our community on different scenarios and neighborhood concepts based on the feedback that we've received so far. In this step, we'll use models and summaries and data to clarify the impacts and gather more feedback. In step four, the development of the actual plan will create an, an accessible detailed plan with maps, graphics and narratives. And we'll host another series of open houses to present and refine this plan. In step five, the work program and the funding plan will define actionable steps and funding strategies for achieving the priorities of the plan. And we'll again circle back to integrating equity guidelines throughout to ensure fair implementation of the policies and the goals. In the final steps in our ongoing engagement efforts, we will provide regular updates and briefings for stakeholders in the public and maintain transparent communication through the website. There will be frequent checkbacks with the planning commission and the governing body throughout this process. Next slide, please. The first major deliverable is the assessment report. The purpose of the assessment report is to establish a foundation of existing conditions, public input and community needs to guide Santa Fe's future planning. The main components of this report will include the existing conditions. This is a comprehensive review of our housing, demographics, transportation, economy, environment and more. It will have a community input component. This will, is where we will integrate and synthesize the feedback that we've received to identify key needs and planning issues. Policy recommendations will also be included. This is where we'll address zoning boundaries, legal requirements, environmental regulations and actionable strategies to achieve our priorities. And the scenario planning foundation will, will include neighborhood concepts, as I've mentioned before, and models to support the future phases. The outcome for this deliverable leading into the next steps of the process is to provide a thorough understanding to inform the general plan update and to ensure alignment with Santa Fe's goals and community priorities. Next slide, please. I won't go through each of the, the topics here, but they generally include land use, economic development, transportation, housing and facilities. There will be an environmental focus, taking a little bit of a different appearance than in the last version of the general plan. Here, of course, we will touch on natural resource preservation as before. But we'll also be adding sections on climate change response and disaster preparedness. Our findings will be presented in the assessment report in clear, publicly available and public friendly formats in several different modes. And we will include an executive summary and interactive web-based maps for the public's benefit. Can I have the next slide, please? Here's where we discuss the first element that's in your packet today. This is our public engagement and communications plan developed by W S P. It has several different elements that are key to ensuring equity throughout the process. And I'll let Nick Fazio take a mic now and lead us through this section.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Thank you, Janice, for getting us started. My name's Nick Fazio. I'm W S P's Communications and Public Involvement Practice Lead for the Southwest and Four Corners region. I am based in the Albuquerque office, born and raised here in New Mexico. Side note, I'm also a planner when I was an undergrad in U N M in the planning school, working on a, a general plan update like this for such an iconic city in my home state was dream work. It's something we all aspire to. So I'm feeling really honored that W S P is getting the chance to support the city of Santa Fe on this effort. It's really a dream come true for me and I know others as well. As Janice mentioned, you know, this is really the, the kickoff of our public engagement process. This is a, a plan that's really meant to be driven by the community. It's for the people. And so as a result, we've got a, a public engagement and communications approach here that we're going to share with you. As you can see on the screen, there's a, a number of pillars on the left-hand side that we're really building this public engagement process around. One of those is a broad engagement. So we're really looking to cast a wide net in support of this process, hoping to reach as many people in Santa Fe as possible from as many backgrounds and perspectives as possible. It's really important that we're bringing a lot of voices to the table. And that segues into another pillar of our approach, which is equitable engagement. So we know that there's voices that historically have not been at the planning table. And we're really making a concentrated effort to bring those voices to the table and make sure that they have a chance to provide their input, participate in the process, learn along with the rest of the community and influence the direction of the plan. And part of the, the method of advancing equitable engagement is making our engagement opportunities bilingual in nature. So that means making materials available in both English and Spanish, participation opportunities available in both English and Spanish. There may be other community language needs that are, are necessary. And so we're, we're committed to providing that accessibility. Then finally collaborative engagement, really making sure that this is a plan that reflects the community's values, the community's priorities, the community's needs. That's a, a key goal of the plan. And so this collaborative nature is something that we intend to reach through our engagement effort. On the right-hand side, you can see sort of five general buckets of engagement methods. Starting at the top, we've got the Community Partners Program. That's really our north star. You'll learn more about that on the next slide. We also are intending to stand up a technical working group. We have a slide on that as well and we'll get to that quickly. We're going to be offering interested party briefing. So these are one-on-one discussions for both elected and appointed officials as well as community organizations like neighborhood associations who may have a, a need and an appetite to get a little bit of face time with the project team. We know that the rubber really hits the road when we're out there having face-to-face conversations with members of the public. And so you can see on the slide, we're intending to host open houses, as Janice mentioned, really conduct some community conversations as well as show up at information tables at events like the farmer's market, school events, church services. The whole point is that we're going to the people where they are already spending time. It's really time for us to go to them and, and we intend to do that. It's important to know, as Janice mentioned, that the world has changed really significantly since nineteen ninety-nine and people consume information in the digital and virtual way now. And so we've got a really robust visual communications strategy that we're going to be advancing. That includes launching a project-specific website soon, hopefully at the beginning of February, a social media campaign and really thinking about, you know, how can we reach people in those thirty seconds while they're in the school pickup line? We really have to frame our messaging and make sure that we're reaching people when they have the time and capacity to do so. And that means virtually in a lot of, in a lot of ways. And then lastly, you are all probably aware that there's also a concurrent related but separate and distinct land development code update that's going on. We have an obligation and a responsibility as a project team to clarify the difference between these two efforts that are going on at the same time and also draw the, the connections between them, you know, they're interrelated efforts. And so we'll be doing that and we'll be doing that through, you know, close alignment and collaboration with the land development code update team. So next slide, please. Just real briefly, the community partner program, there are already community-based organizations on the ground doing hard organizing work in Santa Fe and making a difference in people's lives every day. And so we are looking to really create partnerships with them, leverage their expertise, leverage the trust that they've already built in, in our community here to help advance the plan, help champion the plan and also help provide an opportunity for them to provide input that is useful and valuable and also right-sized. So we intend to partner with nonprofit affiliated organizations. It's a pretty open-ended list. For the time being, you know, it's, it's voluntary. So organizations will come to us and say, hey, we want to participate. It's intended to be representative of diverse interests. We know there's a lot of different interest groups and, and perspectives in Santa Fe. So we're really intending to meet with them. It's also really important that we not ask them to do this work for free and we don't intend to. So the community partner programs, organizations will be compensated through a, a micro grant. So the Community Partner Programs organizations will be compensated through a micro grant program. And you can see here that it's also important that we make sure that the plan is receiving valuable input. And so there's roles and responsibilities that the community partners will be responsible for, and we will share those and work with our community partners to make sure that they're set up for success in meeting their obligations. Next slide. And then our last slide here about public engagement, again, that technical working group that I mentioned. We know that there's a lot of individuals here in Santa Fe with both professional and lived experience in providing technical input on a lot of the components of the plan, and it's really important that they have an opportunity to help us, the project team, identify where are our blind spots, what gaps are we not missing, is the technical analysis that we're doing robust and accurate, and considering important information that locals might have to provide us in terms of expertise. So that's the purpose of the technical working group. You'll see that we're recommending standing up a working group of approximately 15 individuals who have some sort of skin in the game in terms of they either live here or they work here or they operate a business in Santa Fe. And their role is really advisory. So they're meant to provide us with guidance and advice and leadership, but authority, decision-making authority for directing the plan remains with the city and with this group here. As Janice mentioned, we're going to be checking in with planning commission governing body. So you're going to be kept up to date throughout the entire process, and you'll be able to fact-check and sort of back-check the information and advisory proposals given by the technical working group. So next slide. So just to bring it all to a close, we really appreciate you giving us this time and letting us talk to you about the general plan. You know, we know that the city is really looking to make this a community-driven plan, and we're hoping you will lead us and guide us and act as advocates for this planning process because it's a really important one, and the city agrees. So we're looking forward to moving forward together with all of you and the rest of the community here in Santa Fe. I'll just mention that in your packet, you have the Public Engagement and Communications Plan. It's a multi-page document that outlines our approach in detail. It also includes a couple of appendices. One of those is the Community Partner Policy, Community Partner Program Policy. So you can see our approach specifically to that work effort, as well as the Technical Working Group Charter, which is what we will present when we stand up there. So with that, I will turn it back to Janice. Thank you.
And we're both available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
A little level of knowledge here, but along with just communication, is what exactly is the formal role the Planning Commission has, if any, in plan approval?
Well, to start with the easiest part, the approval, we will be bringing it forward to you for a vote for adoption at the very end before it goes to governing body. However, with the frequent checkbacks that we will bring to you, we'll bring the work of the Technical Working Group and the internal staff work, synthesizing all the public input, creating the policies. And in those updates, we'll be asking you for your feedback on those either actually text sections that we'll be producing or concepts that we are working on, groupings of policy, things like that. So that's how we envision it so far, that there will be meaningful chunks that we bring to you, or your questions, comments, criticism, anything you have to offer to improve it.
Yes, Heather.
Thank you, Chair Clow. One of the things that we're very excited about, as you know, in February, we're going to be going through the adoption process for the Phase One of the Land Development Code Update. I'm so glad that we eventually will be getting rid of 1987. Sort of embarrassing to have a land development code that originated in 1987. A lot has changed. So because we're coming together, starting with the community engagement for the general plan, as well as for the land development code, we've secured some funds so that that engagement can be done collaboratively and potentially at the same time. A lot of the issues that were brought up with the public meetings with the land development code really did relate to the general plan. And a layperson, you know, sometimes doesn't realize that the general plan is that 30,000-foot level policy document, and the land development code is where the rubber meets the road in terms of how our community looks like. So we're really excited that we're going to be able to save time in having this collaborative process, as well as to make sure we get robust feedback from the community on both topics.
Heather, when you say it's Phase One of the rewrite of the code is coming up in February, what does that timetable look like?
Chair Clow, we do need to bring this back to the Planning Commission for a final vote and recommendation to the governing body. We will also be going through a committee review, the Public Works Committee, the Finance Committee, as well as a Quality of Life Committee of the council, and then ultimately to the City Council for a vote. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but the last meeting in February is what we're shooting for in terms of an adoption by the governing body. And so it's going to be a very busy February for us.
We're looking at the first meeting in February?
Yes, Chair Clow. That is correct.
So next month?
Next month.
Two weeks?
Almost. Yes, that's correct.
Nice to get some stuff to read.
And Chair Clow, the intent is for, we heard you loud and clear in terms of the concern with the land development code being hoisted on you. Here's the whole document, have a nice read. And so with the general plan update, these, you know, study sessions and briefings will include both the general plan update, as well as the land development code. And the idea was floated, and I think it's a good idea by the consultant of Matt Goble from Clarion Associates, to have phased updates. So there's not so much you have to digest. So like a Phase Two A, where we've dealt with several key issues, and we're going to implement that into the code so we don't have to wait to see that happen after a very long time.
And in terms of what we might be dealing with in two weeks, I know we were almost ready to have a vote on it a number of months ago. So if we could, what would be great is knowing what's changed. I know there were a couple of items that weren't completed when we were looking at it. So and there might be some other changes. So if they're in presentation to us, it would be great to be pinpointed in terms of what is the new material.
That's a great point, Chair Clow. Yes, we'll do that.
Sorry, deviate.
Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask on behalf of people who might be observing this meeting, say I would like more information. I want to make sure I don't miss things. I would like to be involved. Is there a website? Is there a contact? Where should people go for more information?
The website will be available for the public on the 3rd of February. On the 29th, there will be a soft launch where limited areas of the website will be available, but the full launch will be on February 3rd, and that will be at santafeforward.org.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
That's a question, it's just a thought, and I'm not sure how helpful it'll be, but I hope that we, as we go forward with this process, we are very sensitive to the amount of time it's going to take. I know how it's going to make you all laugh because you're crazed, you're doing 60 hours a week on a slow week. But for us, and to me, that translates back to when we receive the material, how we receive the material, that it not be buried with a whole bunch of other material where we have to then find it. I would just try to think, I hope in a way that will, and if we have to have special sessions, if you mentioned study sessions, whatever, if we turn you down, then we turn you down. But for me, I really would like to have this material and the time we're committing to it to be a separate stream of work, almost, that the commission is doing from its regular
Yes, Heather.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. With reference to that, we do have a PC Policy Subcommittee. A while back, we met and discussed, you know, the importance of the Subcommittee and the nuts and bolts of this, as well as the land development code update. So we'll expect to be ramping that up and getting more involved with that Subcommittee. I don't know if we still want the same members, or Chair Clow, if we do have a couple of new members since that was decided last time, if we want to consider other members joining
Yeah, I think we should think about how best to do it. You know, it's helpful, I think, if everyone is getting the information rather than just a couple. I mean, that's sort of what we decided on Phase One of the code. So we should probably think about it.
Commissioner McGee?
I'm curious, as individuals, would it be a conflict of interest if we joined the Technical Committee or sat in on any of the things that you have coming up?
Currently don't have, of the 15 positions that we anticipate that we'll have on the Technical Working Group, we are not reserving any space for electeds or appointed officials. However, the meetings will be open to the public to attend, so you can come and sit in on those and watch the inner workings of the Technical Advisory Group. However, for the electeds and appointed, we do have briefings upon request. So in addition to the frequent checkbacks that you'll have with us just coming with communications and updates, you will also have the ability to ask us at any time for a briefing if there's a segment of the work that we're undertaking that you want a little bit more input on or information on, or if you just would like to have a talking session about a large segment of text that we may have dropped on you. So we're totally available to you, but you will be seeing both small and large frequent updates from us.
Perhaps Rebecca can talk to this, but I know in terms of attending the meetings, there's an open meetings act, so one has to be careful. We all showed up and attended the professional 15 member.
Creating a quorum or something like that. Yeah, in general, we were just going to avoid discussing any public business if that comes up. I don't think that the general plan is something that's affecting the whole community, so I don't think there's going to be much that'll come up that affects a specific case that'll be in front of you. But if something does come up that's concerning, please do let us know.
Commissioner Smith?
I know we need to move on. I really hope that as you're talking about this, you pursue what you were just saying about people being all be involved with the information, because let's face it, there's going to be a point where there's some very controversial stuff that's being presented, and we need to get ahead of the game in terms of understanding it thoroughly. One thing to talk about consensus. Great. Let me know where you find it. But it's, you know, I don't mean to be cynical about it, but this is going to be tough work. So I really, I am personally very interested, as a commission member, in making sure we make time to do this, and if we do it in an open session.
It is three years, so we could do some second meetings on the study group meetings, the second meeting of the month. Although this last time it went by pretty quick. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Nothing further from staff.
Thank you.
Helpful. Making us all anxious. Anything else in terms of staff communications?
No, Chair Clow. Thank you.
So there's no old business. We'll move on to case number 2024-8550 Fiesta Hyundai dealership development plan, and case number 2024-9304 Fiesta Hyundai dealership development plan.
Chair Clow?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
At this time, I think it would be best for me to do my recusal. So I, in my gainful employment during the week when I am not in this room at night, I work for Lloyd &amp; Associates Architects. I did not work on this project directly, but I do work there. So I'm going to be accusing myself and try to get a little bit of a basketball game in a closet. See you all in a while.
Thank you, Commissioner Miranda.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Claudia Cath will be presenting on my behalf for my, for this case that I wrote up there. Unfortunately, I was rushing, so please bear in mind there are some errors on my report. I apologize for that. She will point them out so that they'll be ready for the record. This will be her first presentation before this body, but you have been introduced to her already. And if you have any questions, you can either direct them to me or Claudia. Either I can add some, Claudia can add some, or we will direct it to the applicant for
All right. Good evening, Commissioner Clow and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Claudia Cath, and I am a senior planner in the Land Use Department. I am going to present cases 2024-8550 Fiesta Nissan dealership and 2024-9304 Fiesta Hyundai dealership. Both sites are located adjacent to each other on Cereus Road at Governor Miles Road. The agent is Lloyd &amp; Associates. The applicant, 2015 Cereus Road Properties LLC. The case planner is Dan Escobell, and I am presenting on his behalf this evening. So the first case, 8550 Fiesta Nissan, the applicant requests development plan approval to construct approximately 25,541 square feet of new construction for the automotive dealership on a 6.1 acre site. The site is zoned C2, general commercial, and is located at 4994 Governor Miles Road. The second case is 9304, the Fiesta Hyundai dealership. The applicant requests development plan approval to construct approximately 20,894 square feet of new construction for the dealership on 5.8 acres. The site is also zoned C2 and is located at 6590 Cereus Road. Please note, there's a correction to the case description, and the address for Fiesta Nissan was duplicated twice in error. The correct address for Hyundai is 6590 Cereus Road. So the Planning Commission has actually approved the development plan for the property once before. once before on April 4th, 2019. However, the plan expired due to lack of continuing development. The applicant is reappearing before the planning commission tonight for a new set of development plans. As stated previously, the Nissan dealership would be located at 4994 Governor Miles Road. And the Fiesta Hyundai dealership would be located at 6590 Cereus Road. The, the conditions of approval in your packet are, the numbers are a little bit off. So as you can see here, there are actually 21 conditions. And staff would like to add a 22nd condition, which would require the applicant to not park vehicles in the public right of way along Cereus Road for any purpose of storing or advertising promotional events. So the next couple of slides are the site analysis. The first is adjacent properties. So here you have the site and it's on Cereus Road. Then to the north is the C2. To the east is Ross's Peak subdivision, R12. To the south is the 6700 Cereus Road General Commercial. To the west is 5310 Cereus Light Industrial. And to the southwest, it's, it actually says R1, but it's a property occupied by NM DOT. And then the overlay districts are, it's in the suburban archaeological, archaeological review district. It's currently on two vacant lots, as you can see from the photo. So the lot 1A, where the highlighter is, is the 5.86 acre lot. And lot B is the 6.13 acre lot. So this one is for Nissan, this one is for Hyundai. The applicant will be required to provide archaeological clearance prior to recording the development plan as noted in the conditions of approval. And the purpose of the Cereus, the site is on the Cereus Road Highway corridor. And the purpose is to accommodate safe traffic circulation, provide for visually attractive introduction to Santa Fe, provide for a transition between more rural development and more intense development, and provide design direction regarding lot depth, height setbacks, and lot coverage. As this site is an important gateway to Santa Fe, the expectation is that this development will have the architectural character of Santa Fe. So for parking, there's the Nissan site on this side. The required number of parking spaces is 112. The applicant is providing 276. So 120 are for customers, 20 are for employees, which is the purple, and 136 are for display, which is the pink. And on the Hyundai side, 86 spaces are required, but 198 are provided. So 99 spaces are for customers, 22 are for employees, and 77 are for display. In both cases, each lot has eight ADA spaces and two are van ADA spaces. The applicant is providing 90-degree parking for standard car parking. Staff has reviewed the development plan scheme for compliance with ADA. So for bike parking, both sites show one location for bike parking. The total number of bicycle parking racks proposed per lot is six. Each bicycle rack can support two bicycles for a total of 12 bicycle parking spaces per dealership lot. Bicycle parking complies with the Chapter 14 code for off-street bicycle parking. The project proposes two driveways into the project. One shared driveway is proposed off Cereus. And the other is proposed off of Governor Miles. The applicant submitted a traffic impact analysis. The city traffic review required technical corrections. The land use department will require TIA technical corrections be completed prior to the recording of the development plan. The city's planned Arroyo Chumiso Trail runs north-south along the eastern boundary of the site, crossing through both sites. You can see it in yellow here. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, has requested the applicant dedicate a 10-foot wide easement on both lots to accommodate the future Arroyo Chumiso Trail. The cities, the applicant will be landscaping the entire site. Staff's review found the landscape plan to be incomplete, requiring many technical corrections. These must be addressed prior to recording the development plan. Regarding utilities, water, the project is proposing to connect to city water via an eight-inch public water line off Cereus. A water budget has been provided in the staff report. Approval of the water budget by the city water division is required before recording the development plan. For sewer, the applicant is proposing a six-inch sewer line to provide service to the project. City wastewater division has also provided several conditions that must be met prior to the recording of the development plan. Then for fire, there is one existing site shown in yellow off of Governor Miles Road. And there are two proposed hydrants for, in front of the, each of the two dealerships. And then these are flashing. The other red dots indicate hydrants in the area. So the fire marshal's review did not find if the building was sprinkled or not, or where the fire department connections are located for the buildings. So that will also be a condition of approval. For lighting, the applicant has submitted a lighting plan. Oops, I'm going too far. The, there's a lighting plan with photo and metric analysis. The technical review division found the lighting plan is not compliant with the Chapter 14 outdoor lighting. And also, okay, I have a stuck slide here. Also, the blue area back here in terrain management, the, this is the Los Chumisos Trail as shown in a previous slide. And the properties in this area have a gradual, where the dealerships are, there's a gradual slope. But as you encroach closer in this floodplain, the slopes increase to as much as 30%. But no development is proposed on slopes greater than 30%. And just as a side note, all conditions of approval, technical corrections, design review team comments for the different elements shown on these previous slides can be found in attachments A and B of the staff report. So this slide is the, the applicant submitted a points analysis for both dealership buildings with the development plan. Please note, signage has not been approved for the site and will be submitted separately. And then these are the Hyundai elevations. So the top elevation is what you'll see from Cereus. This is the back elevation that'll face the trail. This is the side that the southern neighbor will see. And this is the side between the two dealership buildings. And the, this is the Nissan dealership where this is the front facing Cereus. This is the, this is the back. This is the side facing Governor Miles, and this is the side facing the other dealership. And I just wanted to mention the points analysis staff found to be somewhat vague and limited. The staff review of the elevations and the point allotted allotment identifies 205 points for both dealerships as required in the C2 district. So there are three criterion that must be met for the approval of a development plan. Staff has found the proposed development plan submitted by the applicant to be minimally compliant with the standard of Chapter 14 Santa Fe City Code and would not adversely affect public interest. And the proposed dealerships are allowed in the C2 zone district and are compatible with uses adjoining the property. The applicant has complied with subsections 14-3.1 EFNG pre-application conferences, early neighborhood notification procedures, and notice requirements. The applicant conducted an early neighborhood notification on December 14th, 2023. It was well attended by area residents, questions and answers followed, and no members of the public raised concerns. This public hearing notification was also noticed. And staff's analysis finds that the applicant has addressed the necessary findings and recommends approval for the development plan subject to conditions and technical corrections of approval. The motions will be, two motions will be required. The motions should be considered in the following order. Development plan approval or deny case 2024-8550 Fiesta Nissan dealership, subject to conditions of approval as outlined in this report, and technical corrections listed in attachments A, technical conditions, and B, development review team comments. And two, development approval or deny case 2024-9304 Fiesta Hyundai dealership development plan, subject to conditions of approval as outlined in this report, and technical corrections listed in attachment A, technical conditions, and B, development review team comments. Thank you, and I stand for correction, questions.
Thank you. Does any member of, do any members of the commission have any question, clarifying questions? Yes.
Are there any significant changes from the 2019 proof plans that stand out?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Piper, I did, actually did not look at those. Since they were expired, I felt that wasn't really necessary. However, I actually want to add one more condition. That the applicant submitted drainage report in compliance with the 1482 terrain and stormwater management requirements prior to recording the development plan. And that, that the grading plans will be reviewed after drainage report is reviewed.
Commissioner Taylor, yes.
And I think we can probably allow that our terrain management engineer be able to elaborate more on that if there's any questions on it. But they're, they're just lacking a few things. We just need to review it.
My second, it was just of note since you're catching some of the typos and stuff. Table four, on page seven, the numbers of the parking spaces varied from what we have in our report to what was being spoken here. And I just wanted to make sure those line up properly for the minutes.
I was taking them off the, this plan.
They're just different in our, I was just following along with it.
Okay, we, we will make note of it as we, when we, when we get to the development plan so that we can get it ready for filing, we'll make sure all those Ts are crossed and dots and Is are dotted. Unfortunately, I was kind of rushed when I was putting this together.
There's it.
Commissioner McGee.
So I noticed that there is a requested 10-foot, I think 10-foot setback for the Arroyo Chumiso Trail, future Arroyo Chumiso Trail. Was there any thought put into asking the applicant to do that section of the trail?
You know, our park director is here. I think I would probably let her answer that. All I did was make sure that the applicant was in agreement with the condition that was provided by, I believe that was MPO. And I don't think they're online, but I wouldn't mind if the parks department, if they have any, any thoughts on whether or not the applicant was asked to build the trail as opposed to just donate the, the easement. Do you have any concerns on that? I guess we'd probably have to wait for the applicant to answer that one because I wasn't, I wasn't part of those, that discussion. But I think our, I think Melissa's coming down if she has any knowledge. I don't know if she does or she doesn't. And Wayne said he can answer it when he comes up, too.
Melissa McDonald and Scott Oberly are coming to answer the question.
Good evening, Madam Commissioner and other. As I recall, it was dedication of the easement. It was part of that.
That, that would mean that, I guess that would be for a future build as opposed to them building it now. But I think Wayne is the one that discussed it with the MPOs. He'd probably be in a better place to answer that.
Are there any other questions before we?
You please, can I, can I get you both at the same time? Both raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand and.
Hold on, we want to see if there's any other questions before we hear the, from the applicant. Any other questions? No, we can move on. Okay, go ahead.
Raise your right hands. Please state your name and address for the record. You solemnly declare and affirm that testimony that you have in reference to this item is the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury. Madam Chair, the applicants have been sworn.
We've had several discussions on this, and actually Tom. To the mic.
So we had several meetings and we discussed how the, the location of this easement couldn't be put into effect on the southern end of the property because there's a lot of landslide and the Arroyo is actually encroaching into the neighbor's property. So that precipitated a discussion as to an alternative way to, to continue the trail. So through that process, we all agreed that we could come in because it's a necessary trail, that we could come in and, can't really point, I guess. Maybe I can point right here. Yeah, that it would follow the southern part of the property down and connect to Cereus Road. So, uh, with that, we reached agreement with the, the city on, on this, on the easement. Okay, so now, and the reason why, uh, part of the reason for it, oh, I think I messed everything up here. But, um, the reason why it was not being installed at this time is because there isn't any other, um, area that is going to actively connect to this at this point. And so what ended, what ended up happening is the city would be tasked with maintaining a strip of the easement of the trails that didn't connect. And it, they felt at that time that it might be just a little bit too much of an effort to do, given that it didn't connect to anything.
Gotcha, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead and begin your presentation?
I think your senior staff planner did an excellent job giving you all the details, so. I guess I would reiterate that this was, this project with very few changes was approved in 2019. 2020 hit, the pandemic hit, the ownership said, we need to wait. We got past our timeframe of when we could still use that approval. So we've gone back through another E N N and the changes that exist are very minimal. Both, um, car dealerships have had 200 to 300 square feet added. So over that five-year period, they decided there were a couple of things they, they needed to expand. But other than the square footage addition to both facilities, this is pretty much what was, and, and updated in terms of, of the, um, Los Termezos Trail that was not part of, of the approval in 2019. Uh, and that's still, you know, up in the air as to when that should be done. But other than that, I, I think your staff covered all the, all the details. If you've got specific questions, um, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Any questions? Commissioner Smith?
Just to clarify that the amendment being offered.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, just to clarify, okay, that the amendment being, uh, additional amendment being on drainage being suggested by, uh, Daniel is something that's been rescreened with you and you're, you're all good with it.
We will do it. I think we have no choice.
I, I didn't think you did either, I just thought I'd ask.
There, there's two new conditions, conditions 22 and condition 23. One's parking, one's.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I might add that the condition that prevents, um, dealerships from putting their vehicles in the right way has always been a condition that we add for every dealership. While we, while we do have enforcement issues because most of them still do it, it's still a condition that we put in every development.
Pretty sure that was, we did the Honda and Subaru dealership and I think it was a condition then, but as Dan says, we, we're not the policemen, we, we don't, we don't go out there and check.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. The carrying, you're right. Okay, so we'll, um, open this up for public hearing. Is it, if anyone here in the chamber would like to comment on this matter, please come forward. Is anyone on Zoom?
For those folks that are on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to speak. At this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, based on the fact that no one here in the chambers has come forward to speak and the fact that no one on Zoom, um, has raised their hand, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of, um, this matter and move this to a motion. Mr. Lawrence?
Chair, I will make a motion to approve case 2024-8550 Fiesta Nissan Dealership Development Plan, Subject to the Conditions of Approval and the Additional Conditions Presented by Staff this Evening and the Technical Corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion has passed.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve case 2024-9304, the Fiesta Hyundai Dealership Development Plan, Subject to the Conditions of Approval in the Report and Presented Tonight and the.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion is passed.
Thank you.
Very much.
Does someone want to get Commissioner Rondo? He'll come back. So we'll call the matter, um, case number 2024-7909, um, RKSS Suriel's Multi-Family Development Plan.
All right, um, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, um, well, sorry I couldn't be there today. I'm a little under the weather, but I'm going to go ahead and present remote. Um, haven't done this in a while, so we'll see how it goes. Um, and hello to the new commissioners. My name's Daniel Overato, I'm a senior planner, uh, with the City of Santa Fe, and I'll be presenting this case tonight. Let's go ahead and, uh, share my screen. Okay, you'll see that? I'll take that as yes. Okay. Um, so today, I'm, uh, presenting a case number 2024-7909. Uh, this is the, the RKSS, uh, development plan, presented by, uh, brought to you by Jenkins Gavin as the agent, the owners are RKSS Santa Fe One LLC. Um, the request is just for a simple development plan, there's no additional requests or variances. Um, it's located at, uh, 3471 Suriel's Road. There's a number of, uh, addresses because there's several lots, but we'll just call it 3471 Suriel's, um, for brevity. Um, the zoning is C2 and R3, uh, which is an issue that we will get into about, uh, what, how we are going to resolve the split zoning. Um, future land use is community commercial, community commercial and residential trend makes use and residential low density. However, the section that is under, um, residential low density future land use is not part of the development area and won't be part of the final property as I'll show again in, in a few minutes when they, um, do, do some lot reconfigurations. Um, additionally, it's in with the, within the, uh, Suriel's Road Highway Quarter Protection District overlay. So there's some additional zoning, uh, restrictions involved with that, um, that just came up with the previous case and we'll come up with this case. Um, they had a pre-app back in July of 2023 and then they had two E N N meetings, one in November of 6th of 23 and then another on July 25th of 2024. Um, and that was really in response to, um, uh, significant changes in the site plan over the course of this development's, um, pre, uh, preapproval. Um, and as well, it was, um, in regards to, uh, working with the Trailer Ranch, uh, community to make sure that their, uh, needs were met as this is a pretty impactful, uh, development for them and we can talk about that in a sec. Um, so specifically, it's a, uh, multifamily development with five buildings totaling 192, 570 square, uh, feet, uh, with 194 units located on five separate lots totaling 7.5 acres. However, the, um, the development area is actually quite a bit smaller than that. Um, so as I'll try to illustrate here, you'll see that, um, the property as it's currently configured and currently under ownership is all of these lots here in green. Let's see, can I put, let me put on my pointer. Here we go. So, uh, these lots here in green are the, um, properties that are affected by this development plan. Uh, you may know the Trailer Ranch RV Resort here, which is, uh, currently in a campground, uh, for RVs. And then, uh, you may also know that there is a permanent, uh, manufactured home community, uh, geared towards senior citizens, um, here. And these two properties used to be one property, they're now two properties. They were split a few years ago and sold, um, by the owners of Trailer Ranch to the applicant RKSS. Um, so, um, that is not part of this proposal. Um, so as you can see from the bird's eye view, this is a little bit m- more clear of what area we're looking at developing. Um, again, it's the existing campground area as well as these vacant lots here. And so the plan of the applicant is to reconfigure these long lots to, um, into, uh, more, uh, more appropriate sized lots, actually into one large lot eventually, um, through a lot consolidation and rezone all of those to the, um, to the same zoning of C2. Um, so the property, the parts of the property that are not in this development area are not, um, being proposed for development. They will be split off from this, um, ownership or this, um, these lots. It's still be under the same ownership. And, um, from my understanding is they plan to bring forward, uh, future development in those, uh, more northern lots, but we're not prepared to do so at this time. So there's, they are being, um, that would be a proposal for a future date and it's not under consideration today. Um, however, we have made efforts to anticipate that development through, um, thoughts around connectivity and, and zoning and that sort of thing. So hopefully that's clear. Um, this is just the, just the caption again. So, uh, my recommendation or staff's recommendation is to approve, uh, the development plan for case 2024-7909. Uh, one motion will be required for this approval, approve or deny the development plan, subject to staff, uh, subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections as recommended by staff. Uh, so to get in a little more of the details of the project, um, again, this is the kind of, uh, figure eight s- shape of lot that the property will eventually end up in if it was approved. Um, as you can see, this is Suriel's Road down here. This is, um, there's a current and existing wall around, along Suriel's Road that will remain. And that's going to create like a courtyard area here in the front where they are also, um, achieving the Suriel's Road setback, which is above and beyond the typical, uh, setback for this type of development. Uh, the main building is this one here, Building 1A. It's an L-shaped building, it's, um, the largest building by far, and it contains a lot of the amenities that are also proposed, um, in this project. In the center of the lot, you'll see that they've proposed, um, I think they're calling it a spa, but it, it may, I think it's a pool, uh, essentially. And then, um, and then you'll see the rest of the development moves towards more of a traditional garden style development as opposed to this maybe more urban, um, style here, uh, up against the road. So you'll see, uh, Buildings 2C, Buildings 3C, 4C, and then 5B is this one back here. Um, and then this lot here was, um, a source of some, uh, some issues that we, that we were able to resolve. Um, but they did end up creating some interesting, uh, conditions of approval that I'll get into in a sec. Um, but as you may have, uh, figured out, Lot A2 is the one part of the property that is currently zoned R2 or, excuse me, R3, which obviously wouldn't be able to host, um, such a large multifamily development. So that is the lot that we've conditioned, uh, to, uh, rezone, uh, as a part of this approval so that, um, so that they can continue with this development. There was some discussion about whether or not a, um, there's not, as you can see, there's not actually a, uh, a building proposed for this lot or a residential building. However, there's discussion whether or not it could host the parking for a residential building if it's off the lot. And, um, there, yeah, there was a lot of discussion, but the upshot is we came to an agreement that it's best that we just ask the, um, applicant to rezone the entire property to the same zoning and then consolidate it. It's just cleaner and better, um, and, and we feel much more strongly that we can support that. And so, uh, we presented that solution to, um, the applicant and, and they've agreed to those terms. Uh, because again, they've probably are planning to rezone those p- properties anyway for the future development to the north. So again, just to get into a little more detail, uh, we already went over 194 units. Um, they originally proposed 324 parking spaces. However, they, we have also worked out a condition of approval to reduce that number to 303. Um, I'll go into that a little more detail on that in a sec, but just to keep going, there's, um, 11 ADA accessible and 30 EV capable, um, spaces that would be included, um, in that proposed parking. Um, I've already gone over the re-zoning, so that's happened. Um, as I was mentioning before, this, um, this is part of the Trailer Ranch RV, uh, parker previously was. However, the mobile home community to the north here is going to remain completely same. Um, they're not under redevelopment as part of this proposal. Um, the only change that they're going to see is that their, their, um, primary entrance is currently off of Suriel's Road here. And it goes through the campground. That primary entrance is going to change to be off of Rafina Road, which, um, we've heard a lot from the, uh, residents who feel, um, for the most part that that's an improvement because Suriel's Road is quite, uh, difficult to get off in and out of. Um, uh, many of the residents are seniors and they don't feel comfortable, um, turning left, particularly on Suriel's Road. Um, so we feel that this is, uh, actually a safer in- entrance and exit for them. However, we are making sure that there's no lapse in access, so there is a condition of approval as well on this case saying that, um, this access off Suriel's Road shall not be closed to the Trailer Ranch Mobile Home Community until the Rafina Road, um, access has been, uh, completed. And that, that's underway as, as a separate, uh, approval. Um, but, but we, we've reached a agreement with the, with that applicant. Um, and now we're just waiting for final details to, um, approve the design. Um, let's see, what else? I think that's, yeah, that's everything I wanted to go over here, so let's keep going. Um, yeah, I, I popped this in because I just wanted to again illustrate the different zoning because I know it, it sounds a little confusing. But as you can see, our, the C2 is, is the red, the R3 is the green. This little pocket here is the, uh, a- area at, on, um, with some questions about what the zoning, uh, capabilities are, so that's the area. Well, these two lots are going to be rezoned or going to be applied to rezone anyway, um, for, to C2 um, as, as a condition of approval for this case. Okay, I won't go through all the details here, but I just wanted to have them on hand in case you had any specific questions about building heights, building, uh, zoning, uh, regulations, et cetera. Um, I'll go, I'll run through the highlights here. The, 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 um, maximum height for a C2 is 45 feet. Um, Building A, which is that large, uh, L-shaped building a- a- against the road is the only building that is, um, 45 feet and that one is. And that one is is proposed to be four stories. All of the rest of the buildings are three stories at 36 feet and 10 inches. They've split the buildings up into three different types, which are just the designs. Building A is the largest one. Building B is the second largest. And then Building C is 2, 3, and 4 are the smallest buildings. And those are those smaller kind of garden apartment style walk-ups. So as I mentioned, they are within the Cerrous Road Overly District Zone 3, which means there are some additional requirements, including a a deeper setback of 35 feet. They've they've achieved that with their proposal. Excuse me. And there's also an additional landscaping required along Cerrous Road, which I've I showed at the beginning that that's also been met. Parking. So we I'll go into a little more, but they proposed 324 parking spaces. We required 256 parking spaces. Staff felt that 324 was somewhat excessive and we originally proposed that we through a condition of approval that they reduce their parking to just the parking requirement. However, after discussions with the applicant, our understanding now is that they are concerned about their HUD funding, which who apparently have requested that there at least be one 1.25 parking spaces per bedroom, which brings the number down to 300, 303, which we felt was a reasonable compromise. And that's why we'd like to propose amendment to that condition of approval. So so in the current staff report, it says shall reduce parking to parking, no higher than parking requirement. We are now recommending that that condition of approval be amended to applicant shall reduce parking to 303 spaces or 1.25 parking spaces per bedroom. Applicant shall strategically reduce parking to preserve existing vegetation and reduce impervious services to the extent possible. So again, we've we've spoken with the applicant and they're also very interested in preserving as much of the existing landscaping. You may know that there's several large trees on the lot of the campground that that we can maybe help preserve more of them through this parking reduction. We're also looking at at maybe changing some of the parking into parallel parking. So it's a little more like in and out for for guests and that sort of thing. Just to try and pre-up some of that impervious service surface. So I I I think the applicant and staff are in agreement that this is a fair compromise moving forward. In addition, I just wanted to point out several other key conditions. I already mentioned the primary vehicular access must remain for Trailer Ranch. That'll be that'll be taken care of. I also mentioned the rezoning. That's the condition here. This is a unique timeframe. We don't typically write our timeframes this way, but it it just was the the solution that we came up with for this for this situation. So typically, we would say they must achieve this condition of approval prior to prior to recordation or prior to building permits. We felt that because of the way this this played out with the rezoning issue, it was the right thing to say prior to building permit issuance for that lot, for Lot A2, which is the lot that's zoned R3. And so that that enables the the applicant to go ahead and record their building, their development plan and start that process of getting permits for their main section of development. However, they will not be able to develop anything on the this lot that's currently zoned R3 until they get rezoned. So I just want to I I just wanted to point that out. I know this is a little unique, but I I staff found that that would, that'll work for us. In addition, one of the kind of unique circumstances is to, again, to allow the applicant to move forward with this project without waiting for the rezoning to happen because that's a significant process that, as we know, can take several months, if not longer. We've also asked them to submit a phasing plan so that they can start construction on the or start planning for construction and maybe construction on the main section of the development area. And then, of course, applicants shall consolidate all of the lots into one lot is also a condition of approval once it's been rezoned. Okay. Otherwise, I just included the elevations. I'm sure the applicant will go into more detail about the design, but just to give you an idea, Building A, which again is that front building, L-shaped building, the largest building. It's four stories. It has a flat roof. It's, it meets architectural points checklist. So that's, that's that. Building 3, being, this is for, it's the same design for Buildings B and C, or at least the same elevation. And this this bill, this building does have a pitched roof. And it's three stories. It also meets our architectural design checklist. The pitch roof does not. It it did cause some deductions from their points on the checklist, but it it they they did manage to pass regardless. So so both of these elevations and both these designs meet our requirements. So finally, there are a few criterion for development plan approval. The two more important ones or more difficult to achieve are criterion two, that approving this development will not adversely the public interest. Staff feels that this multifamily development is permissible, is permissible land use under both zoning districts or both the zoning district C2 and the future land use designation. Community commercial and transitional makes use. Therefore, the proposal meets the general plan and is not avert to the public interest. Secondly, it also meets criterion three, that the use of any associated buildings are compatible with and adaptable to building structures and uses of the abutting property and other properties in the vicinity of the premises under consideration. The staff found that the proposed use is compatible with neighboring uses, building structures. There are several other multifamily developments in the immediate vicinity. And the property is well-served by transit along Cerrous Road. Development has taken into account its possible impacts to Trailer Ranch community, mobile home community. And we've discussed how they've mitigated that and and worked on their vehicular access as well. One thing I did not mention previously is in addition to changing their primary vehicular access to Rafina Road, Trailer Ranch Mobile Community will have pedestrian access through the proposed development to Cerrous Road to access the retail and services and transit along Cerrous Road. So that was an important consideration for for the community, who many of whom use transit as the main means of transportation. So that concludes my presentation and I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I have some initial questions dealing with that. Resoning of Lot A2. So the condition is just that the applicant has to apply for rezoning? Not that they obtain the rezoning before they can build on that piece of property?
So Chair Cal, thank you. So I I think what we found is that they they would not be able to build that parking lot under the current zoning. That was the concern of legal. That was the concern of Dan, our planning manager. And so but that determination was not come to until fairly late in the review process. And so that's why we came up with these somewhat creative conditions to to address the issue because the applicant had been reliant on the thinking that they would be able to move forward under this design. So so yes, that is to say, we we said apply because there is no way of guaranteeing a rezoning will pass. As you know, rezoning are discretionary or they can be discretionary. So that that is why the applicant requested that they say apply. Additionally, the phasing plan allows them to essentially stop development at that lot line if if they don't achieve the rezoning, if the governing body decides to reject that. So that was the, that was the solution we came to without having to ask for a complete redesign of the project.
I understand that, but I don't know, there could be an argument that building could occur if they applied as opposed to if they obtained the rezoning. Wouldn't it make more sense to have it say that the applicant must rezone Lot A2 prior to construction?
So that that would that would hold up
I mean, prior to just just prior to construction on that property, just on on that piece of property on A2.
I think that may work. Let me, I'm reading through this again, prior to issuance of building. Because the way we wrote it is the the timeframe is prior to building permit issuance for Lot A2. So so I think that I think that could work still if we say shall rezone because either way, they're going to have to be rezoned before they can build on that lot.
And what is, what is on that lot? Is it just part parking and some amenities, I think, are
The development, the proposed is is parking as well as a dog park and some drainage features and like a pavilion.
And it's staff's position that as currently zoned as R3, you can't do parking or dog park or
Yes, I think the staff, the the code is not particularly clear, but the I think the the determination that's legal and and management came to was that it doesn't look like they could have parking for a for the multifamily because it's off-site and it's off of the current parcel and it's a different zoning. So so anyway, it it ended up not being a big issue because the applicant feels that they're they would like to rezone that property anyway because of their future plans. So I think I think we all felt that that was the better choice just to avert any potential legal issues because there there was some head scratching on what the code really says there.
No, I understand that. It just it's hard. I I'm having difficulty looking at approving a development plan that requires rezoning in a portion of it. And it would seem, I I mean, I would be more comfortable if it stated that the applicant must obtain a rezoning to C2 for any development to occur on Lot 2, under this development plan in on Lot 2, Lot A2.
Madam Chair, I I think that would be acceptable. And of course, it's your prerogative if you'd like to make that that change. I I don't see that that would impede the, I think the concern was that any that we don't want to impede the applicant's ability to record and keep their development moving forward while the rezoning for that particular parcel was underway.
Yeah, I agree. Dan, did you have something to add?
Yeah, the mind, the mindset that came across in trying to fix this issue was to phase it out so that they can work on the first phase and introduce the second phase. And while they're under construction, they can be working on the second phase. The second phase is an initial, is a crucial element to the first phase and required. We believe we would be able to meet those those elements of the rezoning requirements for that second phase and start processing them while they're working on that first phase. I don't think that we found a problem with how the construction and the phasing worked because of the fact that the rezoning is an integral part. We don't have to include the longer piece of property that they're trying to rezone, but we definitely want to include just that portion that completes this project, which is in our mind, fully compliant with those standards and conditions. If they meet the conditions, they address the conditions. I don't, I don't think that we have a problem supporting that rezoning in order to meet those demands for the development on Phase 1. And that's why we we structured it this way. It's not uncommon to have phasings, phasing plans and developments. And I understand your concern because rezoning is a discretionary item.
But is there a phasing
Yes, we 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 required the applicant to submit a phasing plan with this project and they are in full agreement with this.
So this, so Lot A2 is in Phase 2?
It will be Phase 2 of this project.
Be developed until the rezoning?
That's right.
That's clear? I mean, could it seems to me I'd make it a condition as opposed to
Well, it it it
It is a condition.
It is a condition. And they and the applicant agreed to that. In fact, the applicant actually came up with that condition herself.
Yeah, but it's a condition to apply. One applies and doesn't get it, then what happens?
That's a, that's a good question and it's a definite
Because we can't, I mean, to do a rezoning, we got to notice it. You got to give the public. I mean, it's likely that it will, looking at the area, it's likely a high candidate for rezoning, but it isn't rezoned. And so it's, I'm having a hard time. I mean, I can see trying to work around this, but sure, Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I want to also just make sure that I'm potentially clear on what what staff's goals are here and whether Chair Klaus suggested change could be acceptable to staff too. My question is, first of all, for Phase 1, if Phase 1 is complete and Phase 2 cannot be complete, can Phase 1 be completed and meet all code requirements?
I think that they're going to lose some open space and they're going to lose some parking. And they would be required to come back for variances or they're going to have to address other issues to make that requirement or those features of the development plan comply. If that happens.
So if if for some reason we approved this development plan and they could not get a rezoning for whatever reason,
Possible.
then they would probably have to come back to to determine how to comply even with Phase 1.
Yes.
And then let me ask staff what what I heard from Chair Klaus proposed language for Condition 11 was rather than just saying applicant shall apply, that applicant shall rezone Lot A2 to C2 zoning prior to building permit issuance for Lot A2. Is that acceptable language?
That is perfectly acceptable if the if the commission wishes to impose that.
No further questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Miranda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I have a couple of issues that they need the language in that way and it relates basically to timing and what it really means to get signatures with the way Chapter 14 is written. Essentially, I think what staff's proposing allows this to happen on a path that that change of language would destroy. Is that right?
Are we pleased to repeat that again?
So if the languages change, they would not be able to move forward with signatures unless they they got the
What it does is it just, it changes the dynamics of what comes first and what has to come second. And the wording is perfectly fine. But filing a phased development plan wouldn't prevent them from filing that phased development plan. They would be on path to start meeting conditions of approval that we would enforce. When the commission sets a condition, it is enforceable by the Land Management Department. So we're allowed to push those issues. If, and the chair makes a valid point, if they, the council says, no. There's a zebra fly that that lands on the rock and we we like the zoning the way it is. They choose not to approve that zoning. The applicant is now going to have to meet the current rules and regulations to comply with the the impacts of their development for the lot that they are developing on for Phase 1, which means they're going to have to come in and alter that development plan so that they can comply. And the applicant is fully aware of those circumstances. And the applicant is fully aware of those circumstances.
So I'm I'm just making sure I'm understanding this now, because that's how I would understand what was being proposed as conditions. What I'm trying to understand, change of wording, that they would be required to have the zoning change would essentially mean they could not get assigned development plan till the zoning was changed.
No, it just becomes a feature of Phase 2 that that they're not going to be able to move forward to any development on Phase 2 whatsoever. No construction, no nothing, it's done until they get that zoning in place.
Commissioner Morando, if you if you refer to the staff report, the timeframe is not prior to recrodation, which is what you're asking about. It's prior to building permit issuance for lot A2, so that so they would be able to record, they would get able to get signatures, and they possibly would even be able to start moving forward on Phase 1. But if they don't receive that rezoning, Dan's correct, that they would have to do either a development plan amendment or variances or some other relief to to make sure that they can meet their their requirements under the R3 zoning.
And if the commission is hesitant, you could augment the commission that if a development plan is needed, an amendment is needed to offset the rezoning failure, it must come back to this committee for re for re-review and approval. That's also an acceptable condition so that you maintain that level, and it and it might give you the level of of confidence you need in order to allow for something to happen like this. It is unique, I I will admit that. But you can still build in some insurance if the commission is uncomfortable with letting it go. You can bring it back if the zoning fails or let it go once the zoning becomes in place and it just follows the path that it would have followed without that condition. And I I think, I don't know, I think Jennifer might be acceptable to that condition because it still moves the project forward, it still allows her to push the application for a rezoning. It puts a lot more stress on the rezoning. But if it does fail, she's got to come back anyway. She's got to do something to make it work on the lot because that lot is there for a reason. It it's overflow parking, it has the open space requirements. I mean, there's going to have to be some changes. But I think what's going on is that I think there's enough of the elements in place that we feel that she's going to be able to meet those zoning criteria. In talking with her, she believes she can meet the zoning criteria. And then it would be up to this body to make a recommendation to the planning commission to either approve, deny that rezoning. So you're going to see the rezoning come to you for that recommendation. So you have full control over this application, no matter what.
Any other questions? Commissioner Whelan?
So to clarify, they can start on Phase 1 without the approval of Phase 2. So they can start on a four-story building without the appropriate parking before the rezoning is done?
We would approve Phase 2, subject to rezoning.
Right. So Phase 1 is fully open for construction. The only the only problem is that they lose that. They got to stop and they got to come back. And and I think I think you might want to ask Jennifer where she stands with the implications of what's just been discussed.
Commissioner Whelan, maybe, again, Jennifer probably can speak to this, but I just, I I think what the idea here is not that they would necessarily start construction, is that they could can start the recrodation process and finish their design while they get the rezoning because that that in its own takes several months and and it would, I think it helps their timeline. But I maybe when Jennifer gets on, she can speak to whether or not they would begin construction. I don't know if that's a risk they're willing to take.
The only other question I had was with the Trailer Ranch access going off to Rafina, are you going to provide an emergency access to Serios Road in the already established road?
Yeah, Commissioner Whelan, Chair Clowes, thank you. There, yes, there will be an emergency access, I meant to mention that. It's a, there's existing kind of a fence between the two properties, and they will have a gate there that will be operatable by the fire department. And so the the fire department will have emergency access to both properties in the case of emergency.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move to the applicant. It's just notified that I need to join Zoom, so if I may beg your indulgence for a moment while I do that.
Daniel, can you pull down your, if you're sharing, can you take that out?
I I'm no longer sharing.
I see if you can please allow screen sharing for Jennifer Jenkins.
Good evening, Chair Clowes and Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Jenkins with Jenkins Gavin here on behalf of.
Jennifer.
Introducing myself. Here on behalf of the RKSS Group in requests for development plan approval of the project we are speaking about this evening.
You state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Jenkins, 130 Grant Avenue, Suite 101.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony that you have in reference to this item is the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Do.
Madam Chair, the applicant has sworn.
So I do have a presentation. Daniel did a great job of covering all the details, so there's some things I'll be able to move through rather quickly because I think we have fish to fry. All righty. So just a few quick introductions. As I mentioned, I'm here this evening on behalf of RKSS Santa Fe, the property owners. I'm with Jenkins Gavin with Land Planning Services, civil engineering provided by Isaacson & Arfman, traffic engineering by Bohan & Houston, architecture cross-architects surveying by Souter Miller and landscape architect is land patterns. And we do have our consultants joining us via Zoom. So if any specific questions come up in any particular disciplines, I'm happy to call on them to address any questions you may have. So this is the subject property. As Daniel mentioned, the front portion of the Trailer Ranch project was split off and sold to my client. And this is just the kind of the transient RV campground portion of the project. There's no permanent housing on that section. And then to the rear, there are, you know, some of these old kind of long skinny agricultural parcels that we see along the Rafina and Aguafria corridors that we are, we have a few different plats that have been submitted for city review, some consolidation, lot line adjustment, lot split. I mean, it's kind of a variety of plating actions here in order to assemble the subject properties, which totals just under seven and a half. So this is the zoning map. So this is a great illustration that shows everything in red is, of course, zone C2. And you can see in in the yellow here, that is the R3 zoning, which comprises the dog park and some associated parking. So the, this is just the existing conditions. These are the the topographic contours. You can see the property is pretty flat and and quite developable. As they mentioned, there is some nice mature vegetation on the on the front parcel, which we are endeavoring to retain as much as we can, especially along the Serios frontage. We have a large landscaping zone there that we are really going to be preserving kind of that view and that streetscape that people experience right now as they as they travel, travel Serios. So this is our site plan, which we're going to drill on, drill down into a little bit. But this just shows it in the context of the surrounding neighborhood. Of course, we have the commercial businesses and some hotels along Serios Road. We're just west of the Richards Avenue intersection. And what's really great about this segment of Serios is it's actually a fairly walkable and bikeable section. You can, you know, walk over to the IHOP and get yourself some breakfast. And, you know, there's there's fitness center, you know, across the street. There, there's a lot of services, there's a lot of employment. We are right on the Santa Fe Trails bus bus route. There is probably, I think, the best-looking bus stop in town is right in front of this project. It's the cool kind of art deco bus stop. So we have great access to ulterior modes of transportation. And and again, it's, this is kind of, I think this, I would call this kind of the central heart of of the kind of the lower Serios corridor. So again, a lot of access to to services and and other types of destination. So zooming in on the site plan a little bit here. So one of the things that, and we were encouraged to kind of take this approach in working with staff on this project, is our front four-story building is, it's like a little more of an urban-style building. It's interior corridor accessed, right? So people walk into the building, they go to the elevator, they take the stairs, they get to a corridor and they enter their units from the inside of the building. So we really wanted to create a a real significant relationship to Serios Road. We wanted to have that 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 building frontage and have that presence along the Serios corridor. And of course, we are, we have significant setbacks in landscaping and compliance, not only with our desire to, you know, to preserve a lot of this existing vegetation along our frontage, but also in compliance with the Serios Road Highway Corridor, which calls for some increased setbacks and increased landscaping buffers. So we're going to, I think, really have anchor, you know, really anchor that property on Serios and and again, but also providing a really nice landscaping transition from the roadway to the building. So we have two access points on Serios. So there, this access point here to the west is pretty close to where the existing access drive is into Trailer Ranch. It's it's moved slightly west. And so right now, there, that is a full access point into Trailer Ranch. There is a left turn lane already that's built within this median here to allow left turn movements into the site, and there's left-out movements currently permitted. And so with this project, we're actually going to be doing some median improvements in Serios Road that I'm going to show you, where those left-out movements, which really are not safe across this many lanes of traffic, that those are going to be eliminated. So and you've probably noticed a lot along this Real's corridor, the city has been implementing those types of improvements where really looking at those left-out movements and and eliminating them wherever they can. And so we, so basically, we will retain a left-in here, which works really well. And but and it'll be right-in, right-out otherwise. The east access is, or the north access, depending on how you like to think about it, is is just right-in, right-out only. And this is really would be just for residents, you know, coming and going and and but the but the west access is really our our front door and is that is our primary access. And so you can see we, the buildings, we have, we've really worked hard to decentralize the parking so we don't just have one significant parking area. And so really trying to break it up with interstitial landscaped areas. And then, so we have the kind of the loop driveway that wraps around the building. And then we have kind of our our smaller, more, like Daniel described, garden-style, more traditional walk-up, three-story apartment buildings that are towards the back. So we have three of those in the front, and then we have our our fourth one back in the northeast corner of the site. So right here is one of our primary outdoor amenities, which is, which is our dog park and some associated parking there. And then in our central courtyard here, that's where we have the pool, the hot tub, and there are a lot of great resident amenities here. We've got dog wash stations, we've got ski storage and bike storage and a resident lounge and a co-work space and a fitness center. So this is, really has an incredibly robust amenity program for. So this is zooming in on the improvements to Serios. So there, as I mentioned, there's an existing left turn lane here, but we're just going to be carving it back a little bit because we've slid this access a little further west. And then we're building this little kind of S-shaped little median here. That is what's going to prevent any left turn movements leaving the site. And then the balance of this will remain, remain unchanged. So this is the, what the current frontage along Serios looks like. There's actually a really nice stuccoed wall, existing wall that's there that we are going to retain. And these are the trees that really, it's some of the, I think, best and most mature vegetation that you see along along Serios. Trailer Ranch has been there a long time out there when, probably when Serios was a dirt road, I'm going to, I'm going to imagine. So this is just a little excerpt from our landscaping plan. So you can see, you know, retaining those trees, we're actually augmenting that landscaping quite a bit. We have a walking path. One of the things that we really tried to emphasize with the site plan as well is having a really great pedestrian circulation and pedestrian network there. And actually, I'm going to go back because I do want to point out one other thing. So this is the access drive into the residential community for Trailer Ranch. We are providing a gated emergency access here for the fire department. And we also are going to have a pedestrian gate. So the residents here can get on our sidewalk network that we have throughout the project, make their way to the bus stop or the sidewalk network along Serios if they want to walk to the IHOP for pancakes on a Saturday morning. So that pedestrian circulation will remain for them. And then again, of course, the emergency access. So these are some of the the details on the project. And so at 194 dwelling units, we're just under 26 units per acre. In C2 zoning, there is no maximum dwelling unit, no maximum density, which you may be familiar with. The open space is required is 250 square feet for dwelling unit. So for this project, that translates to a little over an acre at 48,500 square feet, or about 15% of the site area. We're actually providing almost 125,000 square feet of open space. It's two and a, over two and a half times what the city would require for this project. And we're proud of that. And we think this is going to make, it's really going to enhance this community in terms of the outdoor space, the outdoor recreational opportunities. And and so it's, 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 it's not an insignificant investment in those types of amenities. And so again, just some of the amenities that I spoke about a little bit ago for the for the residents. So with respect to the parking, yeah, we did work with staff to to, you know, cull the carpet, the parking a little bit. So we arrived at a 303 space parking count. So we are going to be removing about 21 parking spaces. So we are obviously compliant with the parking, we are exceeding those, the the city's minimum requirement somewhat. This is really driven by lender requirements. We are getting HUD financing here. And so what they're really looking for is a 1.25 space per bedroom. That's kind of the current metric. And so that has been really critical that we're able to hit that, you know, 1.25 spaces per bedroom. So we really appreciate staff working with us to find, you know, a a healthy compromise on on the parking. Okay, so with that, I just want to go back to one slide. And so I want to touch on the rezone question. And so I want to touch on the rezone question. So just as a, um, piece of background, we had our pre-application meeting with the city on this project in July of 2020. At that time, the project was a little different. It actually was more dense. I think we had 220 dwelling units. All of, we had the kind of like one big urban building in the front. It was just, it was just a little bit of a different program. And we submitted a full development plan application at that time. And, um, and so we were always very, very transparent about the fact that we have this little pocket of R three zoning. And code is unambiguous about the fact that parks are permissible in R three. Most of our city parks and their associated parking are in residential zones. Private parks in subdivisions. Most of them these days are private. They're not public anymore. Um, those are in residential zones. They often have parking associated with them. So we reviewed this with staff multiple times. They said, you know what? You're good. You're not putting any multifamily. There's no density issues because you're not building any housing on the R three parcel. Is it a little, is it a little unusual? It's unusual, but we can't find a prohibition to this in the code. And so we move forward. And then we submitted a development plan and we were moving forward to come to planning commission on the previous iteration. And then after looking at, um, running some numbers on construction costs and some other elements of that project, the, um, the owners decided to hit the pause button and rethink the program. And when we came up with a redesign, so we have our one kind of L-shaped urban building at the front and then some smaller, more traditional multifamily buildings elsewhere on the site. So we resubmitted pretty much a brand new development plan at that time. With the same scenario, very transparent. Said, this is our, this is our circumstance. We're good to go. So we didn't go through one review process. We went through two review processes in this project. And we learned on Friday that staff was a little uncomfortable with, you know, the park. Nobody can argue that a park is permissible. Some sort of outdoor recreational amenity is permissible in R three. They were a little concerned about the parking associated with that. And so we talked through it. And we said, okay, we can put together a rezone request. Or, because we are creating this A two, it's part of our plating requests that are in front of the city right now to create a little separate little R three parcel. I'm not quite sure how big that is. It's maybe, I don't know, maybe half an acre, a quarter of an acre or something. So I said, great, we can put together a rezone application. We'll get it in the door. Staff said they could work with us to kind of, you know, expedite that. But here's, as Dan, and I think Daniel also pointed out, rezonings are discretionary. Can't burden an applicant with something they can't control. I can only control what I can control. I can control pre-application conference, an E N N meeting, submitting an application, going through the process, doing everything required of me. But at the end of the day, I'm not in charge of what this body decides and I'm not in charge of what the city council decides. So we worked through this late on Friday and said, look, we will do everything we can do that we can control. So after a year and a half of being at this, we are going to apply for a reason. We will come before you. But I don't think there is there's enough ambiguity in the code relative to the parking that I do believe if for some reason, which I think we can all agree, it's an unlikely scenario. But if for some reason, city council is like, well, we don't want to do that. Nobody can predict. None of us are in charge of that. So I think that we do need to be able to move forward as contemplated through two development review processes. We will do what we can. But I don't think there's enough meat in the code to say that parking area associated with an outdoor recreational amenity is absolutely prohibited. It doesn't say that. So maybe it's a little unusual. But I don't believe there is any harm to the public welfare in that regard. As I said, we're committed to doing everything we can do to resolve this. And at the end of the day, we cannot be forced to amend this project if city council is having a bad day. It does not seem fair or appropriate to burden this owner with that outcome. And so with that, I would be happy to stand for you. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify, it's not just a dog park and parking back there, right? There's a building.
There's no buildings. No, I'm, I'm sorry. I just stopped the share. The bill, oh, that's a good question. Let me, I know exactly what you're.
Yeah. Is that, yeah.
Buildings on, um, C two. Building to the right in the northeast corner. That's more C two over there. Yes, it is more C.
I missaw that. Okay. So that is not part of this. We're really just.
Just talking about.
And the, how many parking spots are back there?
You know, I didn't know, but I was asking my 89.
Okay. So that's a significant portion of the parking for the whole project.
Serve, yeah. And, you know, and one of our agendas around this, when we were laying this out is that we, um, because of the, the size of the site and everything, it's like, what if somebody lives here and they live over on, along the Cereus side and they're, maybe they sprained their ankle and they want to drive to the dog park. We wanted to have some parking over there that was kind of fluff parking. So we could accommodate people who live there who might want to drive to the dog park. So that was, that was really part of the, part of the motivation. One thing we could do, we're going to be eliminating 21 parking spaces. And we've already thought internally that that's where we would eliminate. Yeah.
Eric, uh, may I address the commission briefly?
Yeah.
Maybe a couple of questions that, um, might be helpful here are, um, one, uh, whether this is a, this is a public park or a private park. And I'm not sure if that's clear right now. Um, and two, whether the parking is for the park or the C two residences. Or, or whether the parking is for, is only for the park.
I, I just have a couple of comments. I mean, it's difficult to have a C two complex with an R three sitting in the middle of it and trying to carve it out as, um, really a park, private park, but it's really a parking lot for the people that live there. So it's just, I mean, it's, you know, it's not, it's, it's not typical zoning. I mean, you don't do a project when you've got a C two and an R three and you're trying to really do a C two project. Smarter thing would have been to apply for the rezoning at the same time that you were, uh, you know, applying for this, uh, development, um, plan. So those are my comments. And it's probably going to affect funding if there's this contingency anyway. So you're ultimately probably going to have to get the rezoning before you're going to get funding anyway. But, um, Commissioner Morando, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, a question for the applicant. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so could you go back to the site plan? Cause I, you know, when reviewing it in the packet, uh, you know, before being here, sometimes you don't get the same things as when everything gets clarified. I do, I understand what you're saying in terms of the unusual nature. Just before my question, as I understand it, the oddity, if they essentially were able to do phase one and not phase two, essentially if they, if they constructed it, it seems like they'd be undertaking incredible risk. Right? Yeah, yeah. So i- i- in any case, I, I, it's just, it's, it's a little bit strange because I, I'm not sure if it's actually an issue from a zoning perspective. It's just unusual because it doesn't seem like there's a potential damage to code or the city, but just apply in this case. But maybe I'm overthinking it. That's just, that's how I saw it.
I think staff is, is saying that you really can't put a big parking lot on a R three zoning.
Be that as us, if we approve this, you have told us in the past that we've set an precedent future developments as well for other people to come before us and try a similar process here.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I may, um, the use table itself does allow for a park. We wouldn't be able to allow the Los Prados Park if that were the case. The difference between this park and the Los Prados Park is the Los Prados Park is in the use table as a public park. This is not in the use table because it's a private element that supports the development. Number two, the use table prohibits commercial parking. It doesn't even address, uh, the development parking for the private park at all. We'd have to categorize that, allow that and have to figure out how to, how to, how to provide design parameters, which isn't hard. But the issue here is whether it fits into the development with the zoning that's, that's there and it, it just doesn't. Um, as a, a public park, I don't have a problem. Uh, as a private park, it's not here. And, and I understand the dilemma that they have. I just don't see it.
Does the general plan say anymore about what makes the difference between private and public?
Well, a public park is open to the public.
No, understood. But is, is it? Is it explicit other than, can you have a private park that's signed for public access? It, it, I, I, I guess I'm just curious if, how the general plan makes that distinction. Is it just based on private or public property?
It'd be like a private easement, public easement, private park, public park. I mean, there's a lot of liability when you're dealing with private versus public. And the maintenance associated with the heavy use of a public park versus a private park.
So how, how many parking spaces were, were around the park?
So we, um, so I just, I added this red line right here because you can, everything to the right of this is already zone C two. So just to clarify that. So there's a row of, there's a double row of parking here associated with this building. And then we have, um, on three sides, we have additional parking, which is, um, 89 spaces.
Commissioner Smith?
I guess for Dan and, and then for Jennifer, it's necessary, but I, so we vote to approve this and then the zoning deal doesn't go through. Who owns the risk?
That would be the developer.
So the risk is, is, and they would have to either do nothing or lose money on what they've already invested or come back to us with a re, a re, a, a complete redesign of what they would do with the first parcel.
So from my understanding, looking at the development plan, they've got a lot of open space. So the first thing that we're going to look at any development plan, any, any multifamily development plan is do they have the requirements to support the infrastructure? Open space, you're looking at one at 250 square feet per unit. And then you aggregate that into a common element and then maintain it for the people that you're supporting. They do have a lot of open space. Whether they can make that happen or not, I don't know. The second element is, do they have enough parking to support the type of units that they're, they're putting in place? You have, the parking is designed for, you have one space for every, uh, 1.25. No, it's 1.25 parking spaces for every unit that is 800 square feet or less. And then when you get to a thousand, it is 1.5. And when you, when you get to over a thousand, you're required to put two parking spaces per unit. So they have to identify how many units are under 800, how many units are under a thousand, how many units are over a thousand? Then we tabulate everything to identify the global amount of parking necessary. Sometimes they provide a parking analysis that can offset that if they can make it work because they've got multimodal issues or elements surrounding their project. Here, they have an abundance of parking where we've actually talked to them and say, hey, can you reduce the number of parking units that you have? So if that offset can cover this phase two and they have enough open space to require or to allow for that 250 square, square feet per unit. Then if they get denied, it doesn't necessarily hurt the project. It just might have to be rearranged a bit in order to make it work. If it gets denied and they don't have the appropriate elements to support the development plan, then they have to come in with variances in order to offset those impacts that they lost from this property not getting zoned.
So some, just to keep it simple, because I'm a simple guy, the risk is on them.
That is correct.
100%.
That is correct.
Oh, I have one other question that I hate to even go away from this. It's what's got every, it, it's germane. The density issues, uh, are, are, are based, as I'm doing my foreman's math here, on all seven acres. So if you have 194 units, with, with 24, whatever, 26, and you divide one into the other, it comes out to seven. But doesn't that, if in fact, they wanted to do something with the other four and a half acres or whatever is left, is that going to be problematic or is there no? I just, I just trying to understand the relationship between the two.
So the den, the, the density is not really applied in a C two district.
Okay.
It's performance-based. Density would be applied to an R three district, which is one house per three acres. So, uh, we're, we're trying to make this work. Uh, because at the pre-application conference, we did advise them that we thought that it would, it would work. And it wasn't caught until the last minute when I, when we had a better chance to analyze this. So Jennifer is operating off of a, a, uh, uh, I guess, uh, the idea that it was going to be okay. But as we looked closer, we had to, we had to backtrack on that because we didn't have the, the authority to actually give that okay to her. Um, and you know, I, 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 I guess I had to take the blame for that as, as, as running that. But ultimately, um, Jennifer does, isn't totally at fault here. It was just the process of the review that, that got caught up. And unfortunately, when you're dealing with complicated applications, sometimes you don't catch things right off the, off the cuff. Sometimes you end up catching them at the end and it's a big surprise to everybody. And that was, this is just one of those unfortunate times where when we looked at it, like, oh, oh my gosh, um, can this actually happen? And then we look into it and then things, things happen.
Finally, this is a HUD project. So there are implications for affordable and other housing. Finally, this is a HUD project, so there are implications for affordable and other housing.
I'd have to defer that to Jennifer. I'm not quite sure on what they have going there.
So we are doing HUD financing on the project. But with respect to compliance with the city's affordable housing guidelines, we are paying the fee in lieu to the city of Santa Fe.
And is there any HUD requirements for affordable housing?
I'm going to confer with my client and get you an answer.
No, there are not. Just plain old HUD.
It's just the plain old HUD, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner McGee?
So Jennifer, a question for you. Where you've drawn your red line, and so on the C2 right side of your red line, is that parking enough to satisfy that building? It is. Okay, thank you.
We did that purposefully.
Smart. Thank you.
Any other questions? We will open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make comment on this application? If so, please come forward.
Commissioners.
You need to be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Derek Montoya, address 2085 Plaza Montoya.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony that you have in reference to this item is the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under penalties of perjury? Madam Chair, the applicant's been sworn.
Go ahead.
I think, Chair, the only comment I had was I didn't know about all this other stuff with the commercial property and the application part of it. But I used to own that property with my grandfather, a long, long time ago. I still go into that property every now and then, help out with transient issues and stuff like that. And I know that it's surrounded by commercial property. If I have to speak during the application process for the approval or for the rezoning, I gladly do that. I think it's a great project. I know it's a little piece. But we're definitely, there's a lot of us in that neighborhood that are on board, even for that rezoning of that little piece, because it's like I said, it's surrounded by commercial property. So I help these guys out when needed. I just wanted to say that. It's an important piece, and they've done a lot of work with the community, surrounding communities. Our Free Village Association, all the Trailer Ranch residents, that area's safe. They put roads in on that long vacant property, and it's long. They added security to it to keep everything safe. So I think at that point of approval, or when they apply for the commercial rezoning, I would definitely love to speak on their behalf because it would add a lot of improvement to the area and keep a lot of people safe. So.
I think we all agree, Santa Fe needs more housing, for sure. Anyone else from the public?
While we are waiting, if anybody on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand. And as soon as we're done with the public's meet or public comment here in the audience, we will come to Zoom.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Ellen Stone. My address is 4762 Morning Street.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony that you have in reference to this item is the truth and nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Madam Chair, she's been sworn.
Go ahead. So I'm not even really here for this, but I have a question or a comment, I suppose, about parking. I have a family member that used to live at the complex. It's kind of catty corner. I don't remember the name of it, but it's on Vegas Verde. It's really close. And I just pulled it up, looked at it on satellite, and that complex has 18 handicap spots. And six of those were reserved for guests, and the others are clustered on the northeast side of the property. And that was an issue for my family member because she does have difficulty with ambulation. She does have a handicap placard. But the closest spots to her apartment were not in that little cluster. So looking at the presentation that we just saw, there's 12 handicap spots currently allocated for this complex, which is actually a little bit bigger than the Vegas Verde's complex. Just looking at the property size, I don't know about room. I don't know about that. So just looking at the law, 2% is required for new construction for ADA compliant handicap spots. And 12 is nearly double. That's not bad at all. But considering how massive this property is, I'm wondering if additional handicap spots could be considered just to make it adequate and just even spaced strategically. Of course, you know, again, double the amount is wonderful, but just making sure that it is available. And if the issue or thought were to arise that might make it harder for other people to get good parking, then I mean, that's really not a concern, in my opinion. The opinion, my opinion would be to make it more accessible to the people who are in need of it. Especially there's that long skinny part. But there's one area where I know no one's going to want to park. When you look at the map, no one's going to be wanting to park there. So everyone's going to be kind of vying for those close spaces. And so just making sure that everyone can have access, I'm wondering if that could be considered to increase the handicap. I don't really have a question. I was just wanting to throw it out there.
Thank you.
Chair, there is one person on Zoom by the name of Karen. Karen, please unmute and state your name and address for the record and be sworn.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Rita Gentry, and I'm using Karen Vincent's computer.
Okay. So raise your right hand. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Rita Gentry, and I live at 3466 Sarrios Road.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony that you have in reference to this item is the truth and nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of penalty?
Yes.
Madam Chair, she's been sworn.
Thank you. Go ahead.
As I said, my name is Rita Gentry, and I live at Sand River Cohousing at 3466 Sarrios Road, across Sarrios Road from the proposed development. I and a number of my neighbors have written emails to Mr. Alvarado. And I realize, and we realize, that the development helps fulfill our city's need for housing. There's one major problem that we see. That problem is that the development adds to our neighborhood traffic problems on Sarrios Road. To be specific, the project, it looks to me that the project may add more than 1,000 trips per day to Sarrios Road. The best way we now see to mitigate the traffic impacts is with a traffic signal and a crosswalk opposite the main entry to the development on Sarrios Road. The project prior to this meeting made no certain provisions for the project's traffic impacts on Sarrios. And we really haven't had a chance to understand or review those changes to the medians. The project also has ignored the fact that Sand River residents use the left turn lanes on Sarrios opposite the project and the project's west and east driveways to access and leave our property. As it stands now, it seems that we at Sand River will face off with the project's left turning lanes opposite the existing project's driveway. Is there a possibility right now of adding a signal and a crosswalk? It's unfortunate that we haven't had that we haven't had a chance to talk more with the project proponents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Go, Chair.
Okay. Anyone else here in chambers wanting to talk on this matter? If so, come forward. If not, we'll close the public comment portion of this matter and move on for any comments, additional questions of the Commission, or a motion if appropriate. Commissioner Lawrence?
Chair, I've been thinking about this, and I think I think that in so many ways, it would be a bad move for us to approve one project, one property, one type of land use, but with two different. That's not something that we should continue to support. And so both because I think that it could have future impacts because someday, maybe a long time in the future, maybe not that long in the future, it could have another possible use. And also because, as Commissioner Reeland said, I am concerned about other similar requests then coming from the body in the future and us having to deal with, but zoning is not really established. So those are really my concerns, unless one of my friends would like to make a comment.
Any other comments? Commissioner Smith?
I would respectfully say that one of the things we are trying to do as a community is be flexible that not only respecting what the staff has tried to do here, but understanding where the risk falls on this, to me, is very compelling. That there are people willing to take a risk, and there are professionals advising us that they think the risk is worth taking, though not 100%. That, to me, is compelling in a way.
Chair, may I be recognized?
When the Commission's done?
I'm sure.
Yes.
I wonder if I could ask Commissioner Lawrence to expand to make sure I understand. Let's call it the pin. So what would be the potential? What would be the potential negative setting up for other applicants?
You know, potentially, staff can speak to how the zoning code is interpreted. I am not sure if there are other examples in the community of pieces of property that have two different zonings. But I assume there needs to be some sort of decision-making process about what zoning code, what zone applies in that area. And if we're looking for consistency and predictability in zoning, which I think we generally are, having a piece of property that has two different zones is just not giving us that as a community.
I know that the Commission in the past had dealt with a lot line adjustment on two different zoning properties. And it was clear we couldn't do that. You couldn't move the line and then have two zonings on one piece of property. And this is even, I think, more significant because you're looking at a big commercial development that is partially residential. I mean, it's really a C2 development, but it's got a little commercial section to it. Commissioner McGee?
I think this is a bit of an unfortunate situation because we're essentially being asked to do this because it was overlooked, not because it's the right thing to do. And that does put the applicant in an unfortunate situation, and it also puts staff in an unfortunate situation. But it also puts us in an unfortunate situation because it feels like neither one is really the right answer.
Commissioner, Halen?
Yes, Caitlin, sorry. Oh, you weren't. I thought you were. Okay.
I was going to respond to Commissioner McGee in that regard. I think that, you know, I do think that I would have really rather seen a different application. I would have rather seen a rezoning, know that there was a different type of subdivision of this R3 property, that it had been a lot split or otherwise been divided. So we had a clear lot line. Whether we saw the rezoning come to us first separately or whether it came to us with a development plan, I think either of those would have been better than what we're seeing. I agree with you. It's sort of putting us in the bind. I don't like having a condition that says, go get a rezoning. But I don't, I recognize the amount of effort that goes into an application and a request, too.
Something that just came up to me is what was your original suggestion was if the development was contingent on the rezoning instead of the application for the rezoning. And I recognize the bad situation that is happening right now. I'm sorry for all of this, but I do think all three parties here are in a really tough spot. And I wonder if this Commission would feel comfortable if that language was changed. Your original piece of the rezoning has to come through before. And maybe you can start the process, but the construction can't.
Construction on that one piece.
On the big piece, frankly, until the, but they can start the preliminary work. Because I think that if construction happens, I mean, we're going to be faced with what appears to be a really wonderful development, incredible with a lot of amenities and a lot of housing for our community built. And looking for a variance, they're not going to be, they're not going to tear it down, right? They're going to be being asked for variance. So I don't know if that's something we could discuss a little bit, if that alleviates some of the awkwardness of the position that we're being put in.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Developments are pretty unique when you're looking at them. I've been dealing with development plans for almost 30 years now, both on the private side and on the public side, creating as well as reviewing. So understanding how development plans work, identify the uniqueness upon which you can you can build something in phases, in stages. You're able to combine things through the process of a development plan that you can't do independently in and of itself. So yes, this has two lots that are split down the middle. And as you correctly articulated, the code does require zoning lines to go on the property lines. That's why it's directly separating those two lots. But it does not prohibit the applicant from rearranging what is basically minor elements on one lot that could fit on another lot that would kill the project. So ultimately, what we're asking is that with Phase One, So ultimately, what we're asking is that with Phase One, they have the ability to fit everything in Phase One. It's it's not something that can't happen. We just have, we just want them, if they're going to extend into the residential lot, that they change it so so that they can fit it into the development more appropriately. By eliminating that one lot, it doesn't mean they can't build what they want and what was presented to you on Phase One. It just means there might be some slight rearrangements. And we've done this. We've allowed this before. If you can recall, the Bungalows project, it was, we allowed them, you denied their variances because they didn't comply. But in order to allow them some flexibility because of the housing that they were producing, you allowed them to meet with staff so that we would address those redesigns administratively so that it fit within the confines of the code and it fit within the development requirements that we are comfortable with in meeting those design standards. And I believe that that in this project, if that were to happen, we would be able to work with the applicant to meet the those design parameters without actually compromising their ability to actually start moving forward. Our only issue is that one lot. We just want it rezoned. But I don't think that's a deal killer. And we can prevent them from building on that and utilizing it for commercial uses or non-residential uses until they actually get it zoned. And if they get it denied, it doesn't prevent them from putting everything on Phase One and still being able to move forward. And if you allowed them the flexibility like we allowed the bungalows so that staff can work with them, they can move along faster than having to come back and actually go through the 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 process of 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 notice, E N N, or public hearing, just the whole works, you know, we we move it forward. So our condition isn't meant to stop the project. It's just me, it is just meant to clean it up a little bit better. And, you know, because ultimately, if we felt it couldn't be done, we wouldn't have put them on the agenda to move forward in the first place.
Yes, Mr.?
Dan, can you just clarify what you just said? Without those 89 part, well, it's not 89 probably because part of them are on the commercial. Or already, are you saying that, though, Dan, are you saying without that parking that they could continue the whole Phase One, would have enough parking? Or are you saying things would need to be reconfigured, but there's enough space to reconfigure it if that were the outcome?
That is what I'm saying.
That makes me feel a lot better about, I mean, I, this isn't a great situation. But that's helpful to hear that that it could get fixed and then not not used.
Yes, go ahead.
Second here. What's the timeline on a rezoning? Yeah.
Well, you got to go through an E N N. You got to make the notice. Notice requires certified mailing up to the first 100 feet. And then first-class mailing to the 300-foot line. You have to post. You got to put in the newspaper. Then you got to meet the criteria for rezoning. And then we write it up. We send it out to the development review team that need to see it. Because ultimately, the rezoning has to identify that at least the impacts associated with that rezoning, the city can handle it. If those DRT comments come back yes, then we set it up for a a meeting before the planning commission. And then there's a, there's a a part in between where we give them a a letter that if they're incomplete, that letter identifies what's incomplete about the application, giving them enough time to complete that application before we actually set them up for a public hearing. That could take between three months and six months, depending on DRT, depending on the applicant's ability to meet the the initial review letter requirements, and then time to get on to an agenda. So between three and six months.
So my next question for the applicant here, let's be realistic here, here. No development does well with time. Time is a killer. It's a money crunch and so forth. So hearing what Dan just said here, what's the likelihood of you guys even going through with Phase One, knowing that Phase Two is in the limbo? Because that's part of your whole development. It's your purpose of what you're trying to do here for the community and your future residents that you're going to be leasing to. So I guess what I'm trying to understand here is that as unfortunate this situation is, you guys put the cart before the horse here. You didn't go through the certain process. And I understand staff is trying to work with you because we do need what we need in Santa Fe. But I just got to, I'm trying to understand, knowing developers, that they're not going to want to put money on the table until they know that they're ready to go. And so, I mean, just by doing this and putting us in this position, it's really, is this even going to be relevant in six months from now for your applicant?
Commissioner Rieland, commissioners, it's a very good question. I don't have a solid answer for you. But in in that vein, we would like to ask to be tabled until February 6th. Because we have, there's a lot to consider. And so if the commission is amenable to that, we'll we'll table this this item. We'll come back. We'll work with staff. We need to reevaluate. We need to look at all of the contingency kind of plans and and reassess. Should have let you talk earlier. Tried. Yes, I think, I think we do.
Would move that this, that case number 2024-7909, RKSS development be tabled until February 6th?
Good question. Can staff accommodate that?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we certainly can. And that'll also give us a lot more time to evaluate the issues that we brought up tonight. And it it's actually postponement, I believe, under Robert's rules, tabling just puts it to the end of the the agenda. So postponement would be a date sterned.
Postpone.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Capen? Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion is passed to table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Postpone.
Thank you very much. We want to take a little recess for a couple minutes, five minutes. Okay, let's get back in session, please. Okay, we're going to move on now to the last matter, which is case number 2024-7998, Los Prados Preliminary Subdivision, Subdivision Platt. And I understand we have a problem in terms of interpreters. So Rebecca, can you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So there was a a timely request for a a Spanish interpreter, as well as an ASL interpreter for this evening. We, the city does not have either interpreter due to a few different issues. So with respect to the the ASL interpretation, we we do have a transcript going right now, though we don't have the live interpreter. But I don't think that we have any way of doing Spanish interpretation at this time. And as I understand it, there are quite a few community members, at least on Zoom, who are relying on that Spanish interpreter in order to participate in the hearing tonight. And so for those reasons, it it may be appropriate to move to postpone the hearing to the next available meeting, which I believe is going to be February 6th. So it's it's only, it's only a couple weeks out.
Is there a motion?
Chair Clough, in the case of 2024-7998, Los Prados Subdivision Platt, I motion to postpone until the February meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Capen? Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Rieland?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion is passed.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, we'll move on to matters from the commission. Is Heather still here? Because I'd like to hear about the February 6th agenda. Because if we're dealing with that code amendment and two other cases, yes?
Chair Clough, I just wanted to thank staff for the planning commissioners' guidebooks that everyone received. I don't know if anyone's still paying attention, but thanks Xavier for your, for you personally getting us books.
So Dan, do you have any idea what the agenda is like for February 6th?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, it'll have the the two, you see, we postponed the first one, right? We postponed this one. So you'll be seeing these two again, maybe with cleaner findings and minutes if you denied any of those or postponed those.
And then the code, the code is being? And then the code, the code is being, the recommended, is the code coming before us? So maybe Heather knows. We're trying to, we're trying to figure out what we're hearing on February 6th.
For February 2nd, I don't believe that we have anything, any presentation or anything.
Okay, we're not addressing the code.
Not, not at that date. That's correct.
Yeah, so you just have these two cases that you'll.
Okay, okay, yes. And then any other case that's on the agenda? Do we have the agenda yet?
We don't have any other cases going in February. It would just be these two.
Okay. Thanks. Yep.
It may be necessary to have a commission meeting, the second commission meeting to, to get the vote on the development code.
Well, if we.
That will be ready.
Yeah. You're not sure to be ready.
By the second.
Well, if, if we have time on the second, could, could there be, it's the 6th. Okay, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 6th, yes.
Could we do, have a presentation, a preliminary presentation on the?
Sure, absolutely. A preliminary presentation to, certainly we have a new member. It might be helpful.
And also a presentation on, you know, like what the changes have been since the last time we saw it? And so that we have time, then we'd have a couple of weeks if it comes before us on the second meeting in February, then we'll be a little bit up to speed?
Absolutely. Be happy to do that.
That would be good then. Okay.
So based on your conversation, would you mind if I put the two cases first? So if we have people in the audience, they don't have to, if they choose to listen to the code book, they have that ability. But if they're not interested, they can leave after their cases are done.
Absolutely. Anything else from the commission or staff? Anything, any other brilliant thought? Okay, if not, we'll adjourn. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to clarify what just happened with the interpreter because I feel terrible that the public was sitting here for four hours. Were you all trying to get one here or is that what was, okay. All right.
There was a.
That was a long wait for a lot of people.
I think Murphy's Law really hit hard today.
Okay.
And there were a lot of things that just didn't come together and fell apart at the last.
Sorry.
I, I'm not sure why it happened, but it did happen. We will, we will definitely have a better handle on February, make sure we have both. We need two interpreters for ASL, so they switch off. And I don't know what happened with the Spanish interpreter in terms of whether they, I think they also have two, but we've seen one every once in a while because they get tired and they switch off. I think what happened was just a mix up between the clerks, the landage department, and native affected the interpreters and the signers. And they, we couldn't find one, one, the ASL, we just couldn't get, because they won't, they won't.
No, I understand. I just, maybe we call it earlier, I think, you know, that there's a couple happening in the evening.
Yeah, we will.
I understand. Yeah, no, I, I imagine it's not planned.
We, we will definitely have them ready for the next, next meeting. They're only required for the one case, so I'll probably try and put that one first so that they're not, we're not paying them for the whole night, but only for that case. And then they can leave after that case is done because the second doesn't require it.
Anything else? Okay, and we'll adjourn. Thank you.